I'd just like to welcome Mike back, first of all. It's good to have you back, Mike. Also, I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I'm gonna start with a short prayer. Father, I thank you today for all your many blessings. First of all, I wanna thank the staff of the M.D. and keep them safe today and, for us, give us wisdom, and thank you for all the residents in our M.D., and let's have a great meeting in your name, Father. Amen. Just wondering if there's any additions to the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Members of the Council, Administration is recommending amendments 9.4.2, which would be a bylaw number 1847, the Amending Master Rates Bylaw, and under Closed Session, 12.1, Advice from Officials, under FOIP Section 24. So that's 9.4.2, the Amending Master Rates Bylaw, and 12.1, Advice from Officials.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to adopt as amended.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadia, for making a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Any discussion on this? I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. I'm looking for the adoption of the minutes of regular meeting, June 27, 2023.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Slipchick, for making the motion to adopt the regular meeting of council, June 27, 2023. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. On to 8, 8.1, subdivision time extension, 8.1.
Good morning, everyone.
Hey, good morning.
So Administration has received and is presenting a request for time extension for subdivision application 2022 S-007, wherein the applicant is requesting a one-year time extension on a conditionally approved subdivision within agricultural quarter section at the northeast of 1362 of 7. The subdivision was conditionally approved on July 13, 2022, and due to potential sale of property and some financial restraints, the applicant was unable to complete the required conditions and is applying for a one-year extension. So our recommendation is that council approves the request for the one-year time extension on the conditionally approved subdivision file number 2022 S-007 for John and Simone LaFrance.
I'll move that we approve the one-year time extension.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the request for a one-year time extension on conditionally approved subdivision file number 2022 S-007 for John and Simone LaFrance. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, on to 8.2.
So Administration is presenting subdivision application 2023 S-008 for council's consideration, wherein the applicant is proposing to consolidate an existing 10-acre parcel into the southwest of 3259 of 4, and then furthermore subdivide out from the same quarter a 10-acre parcel as shown on the map attached on Appendix A. Notification of the proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of July 3 to submit concerns to be considered at this meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. This application does meet all conditions of the Municipal Government Act, Subdivision and Development Regulations, Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, the Municipal Development Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw, and therefore we do recommend it be approved with the following conditions: legal and physical access to the proposed parcel and remnant; that Plan 1123361 Block 1 Lot 1 be consolidated concurrently with the registration of the new parcel, and as well taxes paid in full.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll move that we approve that consolidation and subdivision.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves subdivision application number 2023 S-008 to consolidate an extending 10-acre parcel into southwest 3259 for west of the 4th Meridian, and then furthermore subdivide out from the same quarter a 10-acre parcel for Diane Vachon as per the conditions presented. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day. On to 9.2.1.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
I'm here to present bylaw number 1854, Amending Waste and Resource Recovery Management Bylaw. At the April 18 Committee of the Whole Meeting, Administration presented a report on the waste services supplied to community halls in the M.D. of Bonneville. Following the report, Administration recommended to the committee to direct Administration to draft an amendment to bylaw number 1627, Waste and Resource Recovery Management, stating that upon written request, the Municipal District of Bonneville would supply a waste disposal receptacle to any of the community halls. By making the amendment to this bylaw, community halls located in the Municipal District of Bonneville will be permitted to submit a written request for the supply of a waste disposal receptacle. This service will be of benefit to all community halls by assisting them to minimize their operating expenses. Attached for council's review is Appendix A, Bylaw 1854, Amending Waste and Resource Recovery Management Bylaw. The cost associated with this initiative would be the supply of the waste disposal receptacles and the cost of collecting and tipping the waste during our regular operations schedule. The source of funding would be the Waste Services Operations Budget. The communication strategy, the amending bylaw number 1854, Waste and Resource Recovery Management, would be communicated in the council highlights upon its passing and posted on the M.D. website. The Administration recommended action is that bylaw number 1854, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number 87, to amend the Waste and Resource Recovery Management Bylaw be given first reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion for first reading.
Thank you, Counselor Slipchick, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number 1854, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number 87, to amend the Waste and Resource Recovery Management Bylaw be given first reading. Any discussion on this bylaw? Not seeing any, I'll call for the vote, please. That's carried, on to 9.2.2.
The second request for decision I'm presenting here is the 2024 Alberta Care Fall Conference. Alberta Coordinated Action for Recycling Enterprises, also known as Alberta Care, hosts both the spring and fall conference each year, which typically draws 130 to 160 attendees to the host community for the three-day event. The M.D. of Bonneville was scheduled to host the 2021 Fall Conference, but unfortunately was canceled due to the COVID outbreak in our region at the time. The Waste Reduction Committee has once again recommended that Administration seek council's approval to host the event. Therefore, at the direction of the Waste Reduction Committee, Administration is seeking council's approval to offer to be the host sponsor of the 2024 Alberta Care Fall Conference. The Alberta Care Fall Conference would be held in early September of 2024 and would attract 130 to 160 visitors to the region. Economic benefits from the event would include hotel bookings, meals, bus rentals for tours, golf course visits, and the host facility rental. Other advantages include the ability to show off some gems of the area, including Kinnissee Ridge, beautiful golf courses, the Centennial Center or Energy Center, our lakes, and our well-maintained landfill sites. Options for this conference come down to securing a host location in either Bonneville or Cold Lake, and if council would like Administration to approach either the town of Bonneville or city of Cold Lake to be a cosponsor for this event. In reference to the strategic plan, the Municipal District of Bonneville's vision is to be a leader and innovator in local municipal governance, services, and economic prosperity. By hosting a conference such as this one, we will be able to showcase our waste services operations as well as other services and amenities that make the Municipal District of Bonneville a great place to live, work, and play. The costs and source of funding, $10,000 have been carried over each year from the original allocation in the 2021 Waste Services Operating Budget and would be allocated for the M.D. of Bonneville to be the host sponsor for this conference. Communication strategy, communication of the event would occur through the council highlights and through the Alberta Care Executive Director to member municipalities, businesses, and partners. The Administration recommended action is that council approves the request to offer to host the 2024 Alberta Coordinated Action for Recycling Enterprises Fall Conference at a cost of $10,000 to be funded from the 2024 Waste Services Operating Budget.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'd approve that, so I'll make the motion that we approve that conference.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Swager, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves hosting the 2024 Alberta Coordinated Action for Recycling Enterprises Care Fall Convention at a cost of $10,000 to be funded from the 2024 Waste Services Operating Budget. Any discussion on this? Yes, Deputy Reeve, then, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, it was too bad, because our staff put a lot of work into the planning and finding out where they can do our tours, and it was, they put in a lot of work so now they can actually maybe fulfill their commitment to all that work that they did. And again, this is the money still from our '21 budget. This is not a new source of funding. This is money that we didn't spend in '21. But thank you. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Crick.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if it's gonna be in the town or the city of Cold Lake, it sounds like, and if either one of them would be interested in helping out with some of the funding for sponsoring it, since a lot of the benefits are gonna go to the community that it's in.
Are you guys just gonna offer it to both of them at the same time and see who wants to join in, or how does that, are we gonna go by?
Yeah, through the Reeve's response to that question, it'd be up to council's direction what we decide to do for that. In 2021, we were planned to be the sole host sponsor of that for the $10,000, and the event was going to be hosted at the Centennial Center in the town of Bonneville, so the town of Bonneville was on board for sponsoring the event for $2,000, but that would be to Alberta Care, not to the M.D.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Slipchick.
Just a question, how far away will all these attendees be coming from? Like, how far away could we expect them?
Through the Reeve, from all over Alberta. There's members from Lethridge all the way up to Peace River and up that way.
Yeah, if I can say it also, you know, last year, sorry, '21, when we announced it, it was the fastest uptake in people committing to coming out here than any, you know, any conference that they have, because people were, you know, have never been up here or a long, long time, and they're pretty excited to see what the region has to offer. So it was one of the fastest uptakes in the conference for Alberta Care. It was really good.
Yeah, I think we offer to the city and to the town and see who wants to join in and go from there. I think it's equal. Do you have more than one big function? Like, how many days is this? It's a three-day thing?
It would be a three, yeah, through the Reeve, it would be a three-day event. The trade show occurs throughout the course of the event, so that the vendors would be set up.
So you need it in one, either or, you can't mix or match here? Okay, well, we'll leave it up to you guys. Any other discussion on this? Did someone make a motion? Yep.
No, Mr. Reeve, I'll just say it's a great event, and it does bring people from all over the province, and we've been, you know, as far as Pincher Creek and up north, and yeah, trade show, and normally they'll hold it in a big hotel that has a convention center, or if they don't, they'll hold it in a huge community hall or whatever, like the C2 or the Energy Center, but, and then folks will stay at local hotels. So it kinda works other way. I mean, because we're kinda, you know, we're partners in the C2, it might be better to have it there, but it doesn't really matter. We'd like to showcase the entire area.
Yeah, well, we'll let Administration take care of that, and whoever, and we'll be fine with whoever joins with us. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. On to 9.2.3. Thanks, have a great day.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
So the Rural Policing Committee meets monthly with our two RCP detachment commanders, members at large, public safety, and members of council. Over the course of one such meeting, it was suggested by the committee members that the terms of reference for the committee may need updating as several items appeared to be absent. A review by the Director of Public Safety confirmed that a few items indeed required amending. Administration is requesting, therefore, that council approve a new terms of reference for the committee moving forward. The changes include the committee no longer needing to be chaired by a member of council, or rather, it also being chaired by a member of the public or a member at large. The second change, members at large may not be appointed for a second term amended to not being appointed for a second consecutive term. Counsel, excuse me, the third change, council may now reappoint an expiring member at large for one additional term if no suitable replacement candidate is identified when needed. And the committee is now required to meet only eight times per year, allowing for summer break and last-minute changes. Previously, terms of reference called for a shall monthly meet, which was problematic from time to time when schedules couldn't be aligned. This request is simply being made to give the committee some more flexibility. Attached for council's review is the proposed amended terms of reference for the Rural Policing Committee, and the links to the strategic plan, including enhancing safety in the community and building a prosperous and sustainable community, goals number two and goal number one of the current strategic plan. We don't anticipate any communication strategy being needed in this regard, and I'm prepared to answer any questions that council may have in relation to the committee.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion, please. Okay, thank you, Counselor Cradyak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts amended Rural Community Policing Committee Terms of Reference as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. On to 9.2.4.
Mr. Reeve and counsel, I, is Mr. Madden, excuse me, is Kelly Wood? We are, we did have a witness or somebody who wanted to come in and speak to council in relation to this matter. I don't see him in the room right now.
Okay.
I had said, you know, around 9:30, I figured is when we'd be getting down to that portion.
Okay, do we wanna wait for a bit?
Actually, we might just have them arriving here.
Okay.
Yeah, looks like they're here. Thank you. All right, moving on. The M.D. of Bonneville has a consolidated public safety bylaw number 1812, which regulates dog ownership and public safety within the M.D. of Bonneville. Under this bylaw, following the declaration of an aggressive dog by a peace officer, the owner of the dog may appeal to council to have the declaration overturned or amended. On May 23, 2023, Michelle and Bruce Bab were issued an aggressive dog declaration by Officer Shane Ann Dexter, Public Safety, and on June 1, 2023, Michelle Bab filed an appeal requesting a hearing so she could explain the incident in question. Public Safety has prepared a report for council citing two separate incidents where the Bab dog named Bullet has bitten other dogs and/or people. In both cases, the information Public Safety has received suggested that Bullet was responsible for these unprovoked attacks. Bullet was not licensed within the M.D. of Bonneville at the time of these incidents. The dog Bullet has already been declared an aggressive dog by Public Safety. According to the bylaw, the role of council is to review the information and render a decision pursuant to Section 5.4 of the bylaw. The options for council are to uphold the declaration as it stands, to counsel the declaration entirely, or to uphold the declaration as an aggressive dog and vary the conditions for harboring the dog within the municipality. There are several attachments, including a declaration letter which was issued to the Bab's, the appeal letter that was responded to by the Bab's, a narrative assessment of what happened, the reason for the declaration. There's a couple of statements on file from Ms. Newfeld, who unfortunately could not be here today, also Ms. Parati, who's a relative of Ms. Newfeld, also could not be here today, and from Mr. Kerry Wood, who is in fact here today. This ties in with goal number two, which is enhancing safety in the community, and Administration's recommendation is that council uphold the aggressive dog declaration issued to Michelle and Bruce Bab by Public Safety on May 23. I'm here to answer any questions that council may have on the appendices, or we do actually have Ms. Bab here, as well as Mr. Wood and his spouse, to speak to council in the event that council wishes to speak to them.
Okay. First of all, any questions here to? Yes, go ahead, Deputy Reeve.
Yeah, more of a comment. Louis, thank you and your team for providing a detailed description and lots of evidence, so I appreciate that, so thank you.
I can, what I'll do is I, if at council's pleasure, I can read the information that Public Safety received and the information that Public Safety used in coming to the determination that the aggressive dog declaration was necessary and issuing such a declaration.
I think we've all had a chance to read it, yeah. Do I need to make a motion to? Two, yeah, two separate motions or just one motion? Okay. I take it Mrs. Bab and the Woods would like to speak here today?
Correct.
Okay.
They're both here today.
Okay, I need a motion, council, to let Mrs. Wood speak here this morning?
Yeah, I'll move that motion later, speak.
Okay, so we'll wait for this motion to come up, and then we'll look at it. Stephanie, do you want both motions right now in a row, or do you wanna let Mrs. Bab speak first and then make a new motion? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, thank you. Moved by Counselor Crick that council approves, oh, sorry. We're going with the Woods first? Okay. Okay, moved by Counselor Crick that council approved Kerry Wood to address council regarding agenda from items 9.2.4, Aggressive Dog Declaration Appeal. Okay. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried. Mr. Wood?
I had a heart transplant three years ago, so I have to be careful. That's why I'm wearing the mask.
That's okay, I understand that.
So I'm vulnerable to infection.
Yes, no problem.
Yeah. I guess what I'm looking for is a safe environment for us in our neighborhood to take the dogs for a walk and not be attacked. Or, I know, I've had discussions with Dawn Newfeld, and it was quite traumatic for her, and so she's dealing with kinda looking over her shoulder when she takes her dog for a walk, and so am I. So that's why we put together this witness statement, she did as well. I think if it was just myself, it could turn into a he said, she said. So with Dawn Newfeld's statement, I think that lends more credibility to our situation in the neighborhood. And I just, I think you've had a chance to review what's been presented in our statements, so I'll just here to answer any questions or clarify any matters that come up. If you guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Wood? Yes, Counselor Swager.
The vet bill, did you, you ended up paying that vet bill yourself?
I did, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Wood.
Okay, thank you.
Have a great day. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to let Mrs. Bab speak? Yes?
I'll make that motion, please.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve. I guess I'll wait for the motion to come up. Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadia, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves Michelle Bab to address council regarding agenda, item 924, Aggressive Dog Declaration Appeal. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Mrs. Bab?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanna say that he's not an aggressive dog. That morning that we went for a walk, me and my grandchildren.
Just excuse me, can you get the mic a little closer?
Sorry.
No problem.
I saw Kerry coming down the road, and actually, we stopped at the corner. I even made me and my grandchildren back up a bit because he was on this side of the road, not on the other side of the road, and he was going by very slow, and both dogs started barking, and I kinda lost my footing because it was icy, and the leash let go, and they were barking at each other close. And then I called him back, and he came back, and I asked Kerry, I said, "Is she okay?", and he said, "Yeah", and we continued for our walk that day. And then on, that was a Thursday, and on the Sunday, I happened to, I was busy. I don't have my phone with me all the time. I happened to see a picture of a dog with a cone, and I thought it was my daughter because she has a golden retriever. So I thought, "Oh, I'll phone her later", and then she phoned me asking for some sal because her dog had ripped his nail. So I thought they had put a cone on, so I didn't respond, didn't look back at the texts. And then on the Tuesday, I got another text from Kerry saying, "Well, you didn't respond to the first one", which I didn't know it was from him. So I phoned him, and we talked. We offered to pay for half of the bill, but his thing was, "What are you gonna do to protect my dog?", and our dog is in the pen. what are you going to do to protect my dog? And our dog is in the pen at night. When I go to town, he's in the pen. He's got the grad in the pen. And during the day, we have an electric fence around our yard and actually the neighbor's yard, um, who asked us to put the electric fence around their yards because they have a little Yorkie that he's friends with. And, um, yeah, I have pictures, like he's with other kids. He stays in the water with my grandchildren. When they're in the water, in the sandbox, he protects them. He's not a vicious dog. And I have a statement from the neighbor, also a little text that she gave to me last night, saying, if I can read it, um, that he's not a vicious dog, that he goes to their house. They have walked him before too with their daughter's dog and their little Yorkie.
Well, if you'd like to read it, go ahead. I'd.
And this is from Cornet Mueller, my neighbor.
Who's that from?
Cornet Mueller.
Okay, thank you.
Um, to whom it may concern, we have been neighbors with Michelle and Bruce for the past twenty-five years. We personally have never had an issue of an aggressive aggressiveness from their dog Bullet on our property. There has been no aggressive behavior towards ourselves, our pets, friends, or visitors. Feel free to contact me if you have any request, questions regarding this dog. Cornet Mueller.
Okay, thank you.
And when Officer, and, and Dexter, is that his, did I get that right?
Yes.
When he's come to the house twice, he's walked right into our yard. He's, the dog never even barked or anything at him or anything like that.
Any, any questions? Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
So is your dog allowed to leave? Like, is it always in the yard, or can it leave when you're?
Always in the yard. We have an electric fence.
Yeah, and it works?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
It does.
I know it's a tricky one. Like, um, I find that, I mean, I have three dogs as well, and they react differently to so many other dogs. I find that when dogs are on leashes, especially, it makes them act differently. I'm not sure, but, um,
And I had the grandchildren because I've walked before without the grandchildren. It's just they had no school that day, and I've never had a, I've never had a problem going by Kerry or anything or other people before.
Yeah, so, um, how old is that dog?
Two years old.
Two years old?
Yeah, he just turned two in, in June.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah.
Oh, just, uh, Mr. Gandolphe is, um, and Dexter here too, to ma, like, I, I guess what you're asking us is to decide based on these letters on this dog, right? I mean,
Oh, sorry.
Uh, through the Reeve, uh, to Counselor Scarsen. Yes, so the way that the, uh, the bylaw is drafted, um, council has the option of, uh, simply reviewing information that is submitted. So written information, which has been provided to council, all the statements have been provided to council, photographs, the vet bills, and then a summary of, uh, what essentially, um, our or Public Safety's position is and what has been told to us and why we've made the declaration. So that's in that information to confirm the declaration form. It's part of the appendixes. Um, so council has the option to either uphold the declaration, to amend it, or to cancel it. Those are the three options that the bylaw gives to council. And, um, council has also allowed for the witnesses who are available to come forward and give information to council for their consideration. The rules of evidence here are really up to council, uh, in terms of what is accepted. Can we read statements? What's here, say, this is not a court of law. This is a, this is a, a council hearing or council meeting. So, uh, essentially, it's up to the chair and to council to accept, to not accept what it is that they choose.
As, and so has this, I don't remember ever doing this before with, as, have you ever done like an aggressive dog? I don't, I don't remember it coming to council like this before.
We, well, certainly, I, I certainly have not been present for one. It was, it was part of the old bylaw. It was part of the old dog control bylaw. It was very similar to this format. Um, essentially, when the consolidated bylaw eighteen twelve was, uh, was, uh, approved by council, um, all that that bylaw did in variation to the old one was sort of firm up this process, um, in terms of, of what council could and couldn't do and, 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 uh, so we borrowed, we did borrow some information from other municipalities, but there was a variation of this in the old bylaw. Was not very used very often, to my information.
Yeah, and I guess my only point is, is that, you know, based off of all this, what I'm reading and listening to these people, it's, I, I mean, we cannot, I don't think we can sit here and make a judgment on this dog, right? I mean, um, to me, I would say that, you know, the bylaw officer should make sure that the dog is staying inside of its property and not getting out and leashed, I guess, when he is out. And then I don't know what you do beyond that, right? Like, you know, there's kind of, if it's labeled an aggressive dog, there's a few things that they can do, I guess. And who determines that, right? Like?
So through the Reeve, um, so the declaration that the, that the officer, that Officer Ann Dexter issued, um, made it so that the, that Mrs. Bab and, and, uh, and Bullet had to comply with certain restrictions, and they're, they're in the bylaw. They were part of the package. I can certainly bring them up. But, uh, so what you're calling for, which is that the peace officer make sure that the dog doesn't get out of the property, that's what those conditions would essentially do. It calls for the dog to be contained in the home or in a pen unless it can be contained by their fence, which doesn't appear to be something that, um, at least in this case, based on the evidence that we obtained, happened, at least in the case of Mrs. Newfeld. The dog came away from the property and onto the roadway, so any measures that the Bab's had taken at that point to secure the dog in their yard essentially failed. Um, so the conditions then would be that if the dog is in the yard, it would need to be penned, and if it's going to be walked, it would need to be muzzled, um, so that if the event that it gets away from somebody, it wouldn't cause, uh, any issues, uh, in terms of biting. Um, yes, there are some, as I said, the de, the declarations and, and the conditions are there. So I think what you're asking for is what, what we've done. It's now before council to confirm what we've done because it's been appealed.
Yes, uh, Counselor Scarsen.
Just, just Swager.
Oh, sorry, Swager. Sorry about that.
Unfortunately, based on the, the letters here, you're saying it's not aggressive, and of course you'd want to say that, but, you know, if, if it is, you've got an electric fence around probably with the collar that shocks it.
That's just so he stays in our yard, yes, because we don't have a fence right at the lake.
I'm just saying, like, if I, you know, I, our neighbors have a dog that doesn't have anything. It stays in the yard. It never barks. It, you know, it's not an aggressive dog. Um, so, you know, the pictures of it biting other dogs and like a couple hundred dollars damage, to me, that sounds like it's a bit aggressive. And so if you got on a leash...
He's never bit, he's never bit another dog.
Well, I'm not, I don't, I don't know. I have no idea. I mean, I've, um, you know, you're saying it's not aggressive, but I, I kind of have to argue that it, it obviously is aggressive. If you can't even control it on a leash and it attacks other dogs, I'm not sure why you don't think that's aggressive. I'd be scared to have my kids walking by there with a dog or riding by on a bike. It just, it doesn't make sense.
We've gone by, we walk by people with bikes and stuff. He's never barked at anybody else. I had my grandchildren. I'm sure he was protecting them that day. And I asked Kerry, he didn't even, he didn't even go down on his leg or nothing. They were just flanking at the, at their faces. And I asked Kerry if she was fine, and he said, yes. He could have phoned us that night. He did not text until Sunday that something had happened. This was Thursday.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, from what, what I've seen, I, I'd make the motion that it's an aggressive dog.
Anybody else? You're making a motion, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bab.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Swager. On behalf of council, the council upholds the aggressive dog declaration issued to Michelle and Bruce Bab by Public Safety on May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, and furthermore, that council upholds the ownership requirements stipulated for the dog under bylaw number eighteen twelve. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Deputy Reeve, and then Counselor Scarsen?
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty tough day for, for, for both, uh, for both people here. I've been in, in the same situation on both sides, and I had a, um, a neighbor cross his arm over on the fence line and had my dog go after him because he was very territorial. At that time, I chose to get rid of him just because he had kids and I didn't want, uh, any, any kind of conscious of him, you know, biting a kid. O, on the other hand, uh, I was on that side, and we were walking a, our, our small little dog and, uh, a, uh, an aggressive dog, a pit bull, came out and just picked him up off, off the leash. And, uh, and yeah, it was, uh, you know, three thousand dollars later, we, you know, you know, we got him back. So I, I understand both, both cases, uh, but there is some onus on, on the owners to, uh, have a safe environment for everybody else to be walking by and, and, uh, just, yeah, having a safe community. So that's my two bits.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Scarsen?
Uh, I just wanted to clarify. So the dog would have to basically be penned up in the yard or tied up and then muzzled when walked? Is that kind of the, the gist of it or what?
There's, there's more, there's more to it.
Well, I'm just reading it through here, like, you know, has to get insurance and microchip and all that stuff too. Is that?
Yes, sir. Uh, through the, through the Reed, that is correct. Um, the liability insurance is part of it, and that's sort of a standard. Basically, what you see in our, in our bylaw, as far as the, the declaration and the conditions that are in are fairly standard across the board with other municipalities. Um, some of them ask for two million dollar liabilities, some of them ask for one, some ask for five, but virtually all have a muzzle criteria, a leash criteria. Can't, leash can't be more than a certain length, and it must be supervised and walked by somebody capable of actually, um,
Holding it.
You wouldn't want a fourteen or thirteen or twelve-year-old youth to, to be walking, a German shepherd that weighs, you know, a hundred pounds if, if in fact that's the case. So there are restrictions such as those, and they are fairly, fairly standard across the board.
Yes, Counselor Slipchuck?
Yeah, it's gonna be bad for either way, but, uh, I know there's no way after we know these letters and the pictures that I would, uh, allow my grandkids to be around a dog like this without being nervous. And I'd be conscious, conscientious of that. So that's just giving my thoughts on that.
Yeah, Counselor Crick?
I guess, uh, I agree if, if that's what the dog did, but what we're hearing today is that the dog didn't, some, someone's saying the dog did bite, and the other one's saying the dog didn't, didn't bite, saying different days. And I don't know how we really verify the information, see if it's, what we're hearing is accurate or not.
Yeah, would you like to answer that, or the?
Through the Reeve, I'm sorry. I had a, a bit of a hard time hearing.
Okay, please re, repeat that.
I, I guess the, the statement, one of the question really was that we're, we're being asked to make a decision on, on information that I've seen pictures in the report, and I'm hearing somebody say that their dog didn't bite and somebody's saying that it did bite. So I don't know, you know, how do, how do I know if, if those pictures are, I mean, I could print up pictures and show you all kinds of stuff that's not necessarily accurate.
Well, through the Reeve, uh, I, I guess at the end of the day, Public Safety's role is to gather the information and present it to council. The information that was given to us was, uh, was the photos of the injury, the vet bill, which is consistent date-wise with, uh, the event taking place. The vet bill, I believe, was that day or the day after, if I'm not mistaken. Um, you know, it, it is one of those things where we do, um, law enforcement is about relying on, on information that you receive from others. That's ninety percent of what, uh, you know, and that's a number I picked out of the sky, but it's pretty close to that. We rely on others to, to give us information, and then we, we deal with the information, compare it to the legislation, and see if it's in the public interest to proceed with the charge or some kind of a, uh, a restriction as, as the case here. So, uh, at the end of the day, I, I'm not here to say whether or not either one of these individuals is more credible than the other. Simply stated, um, you know, council has to decide, um, based on the information that they have that we've gathered and the witnesses that, uh, that are here, whether or not the, uh, the declaration is appropriate. And if not, then to amend it or change it, or to simply support it as it stands.
Yeah, well, that's well.
That's what I'd say about that.
Yeah, well, what I heard twice is that, um, um, Mrs. Bab, you said that your, you had your, your grandkids with you, and your dog was very protective with the, you think that's why it was, so it's, you know, it's, if the dog's gonna be that aggressive when you're walking with your grandkids, that's, I, I have to say the same was, uh, you know, if my grandkids were around and you had your grandkids or whoever's grandkids with a dog and a dog's attacking another dog, that's not a good situation. And, and, and that's the information that we, we have here today. And you said so yourself that your dog was aggressive, you think, because your grandkids were there?
He was barking, just like Kerry's dog was barking. They were barking. I was questioning if she responded. He said, yes.
Okay.
Why did you get both of us?
Well, it's...
Like, why did Kerry wait two days to get both of us? How do you know from this picture what that he gave her on the water or anything, like?
Okay, any other discussion, comments? Yes, go ahead.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Let, the day of the complaint, when the dog did that, and the vet, uh, the day of the vet bill, like, was it, they coincide with each other?
Through the Reeve, to Counselor, um, Slipchuck. Yes, it was on, uh, March twenty-third was the event, and the twenty-fourth was the vet bill. Thank you.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Uh, okay, let's take a, let's take a five-minute break. Okay, welcome back. We have a delegation from R C here, and I believe the gentleman is here, and we have another gentleman up on this, on the screen here.
Morning, Mr. Reeve and council.
Morning.
I'll just do a, a brief intro, uh, for this. This is, uh, been the, the R C Strategies, uh, was awarded the, um, RFP to complete the intermunicipal trails master plan, and that was in collaboration with Cold Lake as part of the ICF's, um, kind of a, a spinoff of that grant, uh, which, which covered this. Um, they've been working at this now for a little over a year, and this is, uh, now the final prod, product of that is within your council package. Uh, Kevin here and, uh, Mr. Justin Ellis will be kind of presenting a really high-level overview, uh, summary of this master plan, uh, for council, and, and, uh, please, if, if there's any questions as he goes through or after, um, these are, these are the two, two, uh, brains behind, behind this. I'll just, uh, kind of give a, a, and it, it's best laid out within their executive summary, um, just kind of what this, this master plan was to encompass, uh, through its work. So the intermunicipal trails master plan is a collaborative effort of the M D of Bonneville and the city of Cold Lake to guide improvements to the connectivity and quality of the region's trails and trail experiences for residents and visitors. These efforts are intended to function as a foundation and as a catalyst for the administrations to achieve their respective quality of life, community, environmental, and economic goals. As a master plan, the opportunities and recommendations presented within are conceptual and borrow heavily from the ideas in, input of the project's public and stakeholder engagement efforts. And with that, I will, uh, pass it off to Mr. Warrington.
Thank you, Bowen.
Morning.
Morning, Mr. Reeve. Thanks, Stephanie. Yeah, my name is Kevin Wartan. I'm a senior consultant with R C Strategies. Justin Ellis is our project manager and partner with the firm, and as you saw there, he's connected with us, uh, virtually from Victoria. On behalf of our firm, thank you for the opportunity to introduce the introduce, uh, the intermunicipal trails master plan for the M D and the city for your information. We refer to specific sections of the report, and we invite you to follow along in your online copies. As Bowen mentioned, this project stems from the M As Bowen mentioned, this project stems from the MD and cities, city of Cold Lake's intermunicipal collaboration framework. Our team has been working with Bowen Clausen and your staff team as well as our city of Cold Lake contacts since early 2022. We're asked to help develop a comprehensive master plan that could serve to guide non-motorized and motorized trail development, management and policy in the MD and city over the next ten years to better serve your residents and visitors. Our draft master plan is with you now and we'll be highlighting some specific sections in that plan. Our discovery work for the project included extensive review of existing municipal and provincial plans and direction. Our desktop mapping drew from many sources and in total, our field team spent over a week on the ground visiting and assessing and traveling the formal and informal trails in the seventy, seventy-two hundred square kilometers of the planning area. As Bowen mentioned, we relied heavily on the input and perspective of your, of your residents. We had an open online survey that ran for seven weeks last summer. We had an online mapping tool that yielded over thirty very, very helpful and fruitful contributions of routes, challenges and opportunities. We approached thirty-five different organizations within the, the region and we met with twenty individuals from fourteen of those organizations. We reached out to all of the Indigenous and Métis communities within the MD. We were fortunate to have one very productive and, and helpful meeting with the Cold Lakes First Nation. We hosted and staffed and, we hosted staffed and unstaffed pop-ups kiosks at several sites across the region, including Kinnosu Beach, motocross track, Cold, the Lions Park, the Iron Horse Beaver Trestle, Moose Lake, Tucker Lake and Invezio Beach. We met with local and provincial governments and Alberta's staff and we worked closely with your MD staff as well as city staff. What we heard from them is summarized in section one point three of the plan in front of you, but we also encourage a review of the projects, what we heard report and where we've provided, that we've provided electronically for complete detail on the efforts and the findings. In short, your residents and community clearly communicated they were looking for their trails and trail services to provide and support connection, both local and long distance, quality of experience, quality of life, safety and security, sustainability, respectful planning and trail use, efficient implementation and activation, as well as strong collaboration and partnerships. Sections one point five of the report extensively document the considerations, benefits, planning context, visitation patterns and existing trail locations and conditions in the region. We want to focus on the remain, the remainder of our time on the provincial, potential future regional trail system, starting with the management shifts and concepts presented in section six of the plan that we think would build on the great work that the, the MD has already done and provide a solid foundation for the recommendations, recommended strategies that follow in section seven of the report. So to streamline and make significant progress on improving the region's trails as recreation and tourism assets, we believe it's important to shift to a more regional and seamless trail ecosystem approach across the municipalities, to jointly articulate the future trail and trail resource conditions that you'd like to see achieved, to adopt a common trail classification system or trail management objectives is the words, the term that's used in the report or, or TMOs, to, to provide a common language for the municipalities to, to work with, to use and be guided by trail experience zones, TEZs, to identify and describe areas that have potential or need for specific types of trail experiences and to use a common set of, a level of development guidelines for trail related infrastructure and amenities. So with respect to what we think could be some, some good desired conditions to strive for, the plan recommends that the MD and city work together and also work closely with the Iron Horse Trail Partners and the government of Alberta on public land opportunities to jointly communicate what the region might want to achieve. These recommended future conditions are presented in greater, greater, sorry, greater detail in six point two and they see, suggest that the region sees itself, you know, becoming a unique and inclusive must experience trail destination, having a trail system that is sustainable, having strong and diverse community support for trails and trails tourism, having a trail system that functions as an asset that contributes to the, the region's economic growth and diversification and having strong and effective trail partnerships and governance for which you already have some great foundations. With the foundation in these desired conditions in place, we believe the municipalities are fir, firm ground to implement the plan. The plan's twenty-four actions are grouped into six strategies in the document. Won't have time to deep, dive deep into each of these, but they are found in extensive detail in section seven. And we think it's important to stress that these strategies and actions align with the existing Iron Horse Trail strategic development plan as well as the government of Alberta's Emergent Trails Act processes. In short, we see the opportunities and work to be done in these six areas are to harmonize the trail foundations for the, the work with, with the city of Cold Lake, to proactively address the sustainability issues that are present in some places, to develop and connect a diversified trail network, to enhance user experiences, both motorized and non-motorized, to manage the use and its impacts and to activate and animate the communities. I'm gonna move on to the maps, but I think it's important just to stress that sometimes when you get together in a room with maps, that people gravitate to the maps, but we want to really sort of emphasize that the, the strategies and recommendations and the other, and the other parts of the, the plan are, are just as important as the maps and proposed connections themselves. Finally, in section seven point three of the plan, we identify and recommend specific connections and trail experience zones in the region. I've got three maps, I'm just gonna share here. This is in section seven point three point one map and it outlines the area sort of immediately adjacent to the city of Cold Lake. Please keep in mind that these connections are conceptual and would require detailed planning and engagement to confirm their feasibility and alignment and the trail management objectives, the TMOs, for each connection, including its, our recommended permitted uses and design parameters are outlined in the document. So at the MD and city interface, we've worked with your staff to highlight twelve priority connections, including connecting to Cold Lake Provincial Park, to Kinnosu Ridge, to some of the rural subdivisions adjacent to, to the city and beyond, as well as upgrading the African Lake connection. At the request of your administration, we've worked with the talented team at Mackelhany to provide class D costing for seven of these connections and this, this detail for those seven can be found in appendix C of the, the plan. The shaded areas on, on the map are trail experience zones where we believe additional consideration for specific types of trail experiences should continue in your planning work, including enhanced rural connections, a Beaver River water route and some locally optimized non-motorized experiences. Moving on to section seven with three point two, this is the, the south of the, the MD. The plan recommends nine priority connections, including several that link to the region's unique spine trail, the, the very unique Iron Horse Trail, including connections to and around Muriel Lake, the local MD and provincial parks, the rural subdivisions and to St. Paul County. Shaded areas or some specific trail experience zones for additional consideration, including potential, unique off highway vehicle experiences north and west of Moose Lake and other, several other locally optimized non-motorized experiences. Moving to the north, this is section seven point three point three. We think there is significant potential for the MD and city to recognize the unique opportunity to collaborate on facilitating high quality, long distance, off highway vehicle oriented optimized opportunities in collabora, collaboration with the government of Alberta under the new Trails Act. There are several opportunities that are coming forward from the, the province and this, we think this is a great opportunity to, to leverage some of those, those chances. We're recommending fifteen potential connections, including connectivity to Tucker, Crane, Bork, Wolf, Murray and May Lakes. Such a network, if built with intent, connected to the Iron Horse Trail and supported by quality accommodation, food and beverage and other services, has the potential to be a unique and highly desirable signature trail opportunity that could further attract tourism to the region as there is nothing else like this in Western North America. Shaded trail experience zones in this area focus on further improvements to long distance and adventure oriented trail experiences. So as we wrap up our presentation window here, Mr. Reeve, we just want to thank you again for the opportunity to share some of the information on this document with you. We plan to share the same presentation with the city of Cold Lake council this evening. And if we have time, Mr. Reeve, we're happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, first of all. Any questions from council? Deputy Reeve Fadav.
I, yeah, thanks for that. So you were saying Western North America opportunities, so that's, that's big.
It is, yeah.
So as far as the support from the province, you, like you were mentioning, can you get a little more in depth onto that? Pisingo, you know, regards to trails, where, you know, we, we are sure lacking from Ontario where, you know, like the infrastructure does support their trail systems with, you know, getting plates and X amount of dollars from your plates and insurance.
Yeah.
Over, over to that. What kind of system or what kind of system do they potentially have in place for that in our province?
Yeah, through Mr. Reeve to the counselor. A great question. I do not work personally for the, the province, but I'm happy to share some of the information that is, is emergent from the province.
I won't hold you to it.
Yeah, so the, the Trails Act, I believe it was, was passed on in December of twenty and twenty-one there, under the, the, the UCP government. And that Trails Act foundationally changes the types of trail opportunities that are available to nonprofit organizations and to municipalities. The, the workings of, procedural workings of the, of, of, of the act are still being developed by, by the province, but they include grant opportunities and the Trails Act provides for the, for the provision to have municipalities and nonprofit organizations step forth to be the operators, the, the act uses the term managers of trails on provincial land without entering into disposition or, or lease type of arrangements there. So you're seeing the, the province is currently in the process of designating provincial trails, Trails Act trails under this act and you're seeing sort of a rolling implementation of these designated trails. All of these trails will need to be supported under the act by a trail management plan, so they need to sort of be rooted in good governance. And we believe that this particular plan that we have in front of you today provides the foundation for that type of, of work to occur. But it does present a really unique opportunity for, for municipalities to, to move forward with, with a, a network of, of, of trails that has, has good permanence on, on the landscape and is, is also afforded some recognition by the, the province. Now, Justin, you're, you're with us there, I'm not sure if you want to add anything there.
Counsel, I'd like to present to you, and I would only add to the, I understood some of the questions that you perhaps focused around funding opportunities coming from the province and we are seeing greater levels of funding being issued directly to trail organizations such as the Alberta Off Highway Vehicle Association, receiving a fairly sizable grant to take on as a provincial trail operator and manager. Same with the Alberta Snowmobile Association, so for the first time in mine and Kevin's careers, we're seeing quite sizable investments being made in trails and it seems that that is going to continue forward. In addition to that, I would also just like to add that Alberta has really developed an enhanced focus on trails tourism and the tourism line of funding might also increase for trails that have the opportunity to attract higher level visitors to regions.
Yeah, thanks, Justin. In short though, a lot of those processes are still under development, but we, we believe that we can, we can help you get ready for those opportunities as they emerge.
Yeah, just kind of add on to that, I mean, it, it becomes about, you know, user fees and, you know, you're saying it's, it's sizable. I mean, we're talking some huge trails, I mean, we just had a group come on looking for some funding on a, on a groomer for, for snowmobiles. I mean, the groomers, you're looking at three to four hundred thousand. I mean, being that it's, it's a smaller user group, they just, you know, they don't have the money.
Yeah.
And, and the, the grant funding that they've been doing and, you know, raising money, cookie sales, whatever they're doing is just not, just not enough for the, the territory that, that needs covering. So, yeah, there's some, definitely some challenges as far as funding goes and, and how, how do we get there? It's a great opportunity, but I think also, you know, the users, users should be using it as well. There should be some, some cost to that, so I'm looking forward to. So who's in charge of that? Like, like, you know what ministry's in charge of that?
Yeah, so it's, it's forestry and parks is the, under the new ministry structure. It's forestry and parks.
Kate, sounds good. I think, I think maybe we'll try to get a meeting with them, so, Kate, appreciate it.
And, and they are aware of this project there and they're curious to see the recommendations, but we, under Bowen's guidance there, we, we want to, to bring this forward to, to council first.
Yeah, like you say, in, in typical provincial fashion, the, the downloading seems to be, you know, it's a gift that keeps on giving. And, you know, at what point do we, as a municipality, we keep getting less money from oil and gas, but yet they want more money for trails, so it's a, it's a balance, so, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Swager.
Yeah, you mentioned the funding, the Off Highway Vehicle Group got, I think, a million bucks for Alberta though.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we're not really getting a lot of money, so, I mean, hopefully more coming. The Snowmobile Group got some, but the local group really didn't get a lot, again, because it's Alberta wide. But my question is, how do we, what's our next step here? Maybe Bowen answers that one, but what's, what's, what do we do now? Because I hate to have this sit on a desk or on a, you know, cabinet somewhere and never progress, so what do we do?
Yeah, well, the, the plan, through, sorry, Mr.
Yeah, no problem. Don't be sorry.
The, the plan does, we believe that the priority connections are, are the, the ones that really need to, to, to see the, the initial investment. And because it's, it's built under the ICF, I think the, the trail connections first and foremost around the, the interface between the city and the MD probably need first attention there. Beyond that there, I think the, the, the opportunity to sort of, to look at the other connections that stem from the Iron Horse Trail, remembering that the Iron Horse Trail is, is actively working on the, on their strategic recommendations there to, to, to work closely with them, to start to grow that network out, to, to think of it like a tree, just to, to, to grow out, to, to, to build some of those connections. Lacklavish County and in the county of St. Paul are, Lacklavish was working on a plan of their own and the city, or county of St. Paul is looking to, to develop one of their own here. I think the RFP is out right now there, so, so there's, there's a lot of really serendipitous opportunities that, that are emergent there. And I think we, my recommendation is that, that, that the, both the city and the MD are, you know, feel nimble to sort of take advantage of the opportunities that best fit with the, the, maybe the, the grant opportunities that are coming forward and that align with the, with the, with the plan in front of you there.
Thank you. Yes, Bowen.
I can add kind of the, on the, the next steps of what we would see with council. So part of the, the recommendation would be that this would come back at a later council meeting and council would adopt this plan or discuss the, the next steps. Obviously, this would entail budget approvals and, and from that adoption, then we would kind of sort through and bring forward recommendations on, based on the priorities in here to put into budget for deliberation at that time. So that would kind of be some of the, the next steps after this.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I just got a comment on Deputy Reeve's comments. I think we're the only province in, in Canada that doesn't have a program where we actually collect money from users, so. Maybe we should follow through and put some pressure on, on our provincial government to help out. Because the funding's there, users don't, I don't think they mind paying. I think we've talked to our CIO and he's lived in other provinces and they do pay and it helps, so. Something, something to think about there too, so, thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Crick then Counselor Slipchuk.
Yeah, I just wondered if it's possible to get the, just east of town here.
Yeah, I just wondered if it's possible to get the, just east of town here, Emerald Estates, there's a subdivision there, and they'd like a trail coming into town. It's in there, okay. So if it's already in there, that's good. Thanks.
Did you get that?
Yes, Mr. Reeve, we got that, and that is reflected in, in the second. Thanks, I missed that somehow. Thank you.
I had to, I had to there, Josh.
You didn't tell them they need a bridge, too. They need a bridge, too. Anyway, has there been any talk about maybe user fees with, when registering ATVs and municipalities that go towards trail systems? Are we pushing for that or?
Yeah, again, I, I don't work for the province. There, that, that has been an active, an active conversation point from time to time there. My understanding is, is that there was some internal realignments of how the user fees for plate registration for off-highway vehicles was allocated within provincial budgets, but that, that'll be, that won't be visible, I don't think, in the externally facing provincial documentation there. But it's, it is an active point of, of engagement. There's no question about that.
Thank you. One more?
Yeah, another question is, so what's all these, if we get all these trails and get them all in, what's the best way to maintain them all? Like you say, different groups come forward?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch, catch that.
What would be the best way to maintain all these trails down the road?
Yeah, well, the, the opportunities under the Trails Act provides for these potential operational funding dollars to, to be, to be available. We, we find in our realm of work there that it, it works best for the provincial trails when there is collective buy-in and, and cooperation on the maintenance of the trails. We all know that nonprofit organizations, they wax and they wane, you know, because they get, they have strong points and they have, have low points in their, in their, in their strength and capacity there. And so one of the recommendations put forward in, in, I think it's in 7.1 there, is, is just for the, for the MD and for the City of Coal Lake to see themselves as sort of the, the keel in the water, right? And just sort of be there, you know, to, to, to help hold their hands, to, to work through some of these, these, these ebbs and flows and realize that those ebbs and flows are real. And, but to, to be there as sort of the, the stable force in, in, in a partnership arrangement there. Most organizations have some really talented folks, and I think it's fair to say that, that that talented capacity is growing across the province in all the user communities there. So I, I would recommend that, you know, some things to think about, and again, this is in, in the, the plan. How can, how can you build capacity and knowledge and understanding common language across those different organizations? And, you know, sort of, you know, to use the old proverb, you know, give a man a fish, or teach him to fish. I, I think, you know, the MD can see themselves as, as being teachers of how, how to fish and to facilitate that. Because there's a lot of, a lot of interest in, in lending a hand, but sometimes that hand isn't always, isn't talented enough to, to do it right out of the gates.
Yes, Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, just the current fees in Ontario is $150 for an ATV trail permit and $200 in the wintertime for a snowmobile trail permit.
Yeah, that's quite high. That'll make a lot of trails. Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fadav?
I think high is, is in perspective, right?
Sorry?
High, what does that mean? I mean, when you're spending, you know, 15, 20, $30,000 on a machine, I think $150 per month to use it is, is, is fair, especially when the cost of fuel and maintaining these vehicles is so high. But absolutely right.
Well, the, the problem I find with a lot of these things is you put them in and everything, you get going, and then people lose interest, and then the, the people who ever put them in has to flip the bill for it at the end of the day. So every, you know, no one wants to take care of it after. That's a, that's a big problem, too. Right? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just got to say on the, on the note of user fees, that there's a lot of people out there. My ATVs are not 10, 15, 20,000 ATV's. They're a lot less than that, significantly less than that. And there's a lot of people out there that, I agree, they wouldn't, they just wouldn't register their ATVs anymore. They're just going to stick to private property. And a lot of people are registering them so they can, they can go from one, just short distances, you know, they have land or a relative of short ways away, and they want to build a drive down the ditch, and it has to be registered to do that. So it's, I'm, I'm not in favor of high user fees like that.
Yeah, but that's.
Associated with your registration.
Yeah, that's different. This is a trail, like you get a trail sticker, so you can go on the trails. Then when the, when, when police officers don't find that trail sticker, they give you opportunity to buy one. So it's not as if you, every registered vehicle gets, has to have that. So, but yeah, good question.
That makes sense, then.
Yeah, for sure.
And, and Mr. Reeve, just clarification, that's $150 per year.
Yeah, not per month.
Not, not per month. Having been familiar and having been active in the Ontario Federation of Snowmobile Clubs years ago, the, the permits were just for being on the, on the trails that were purchased and built by the municipalities or the local clubs. It wasn't part of your actual registration of either the quad or, or the snowmobile. It was a permit that was purchased specifically to be on that trail.
From A to B in your municipality.
Or, or anywhere, actually with the OFSC.
Or they joined up.
It was anywhere in Ontario. And actually, there was even, there was agreements with other provinces that if you had an Ontario Federation of Snowmobile Club, snowmobile permit, and you were snowmobiling on trails in Quebec, Quebec residents were allowed to snowmobile in Ontario with their Quebec permits. And there was even, there was agreements, you know, interprovincially, that one, just like a driver's license, your license plate allows you to drive in Manitoba. And a Manitoba license plate can drive in Alberta.
Right on. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you, Kevin and Justin, for your presentation. Well done. I wish you a great presentation tonight in Coal Lake, and thank you for coming to this area. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reeve.
Thank you, Justin, up there. Have a great rest of the day. I believe we're on 9.3.1, is that correct, gentlemen? Oh, I need a motion. I did that again.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to accept this and then have, and then bring it back at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Bring my screen back up. Okay, thank you councillor Swiger for making a motion that council accepts a presentation by RC Strategic on the draft intermunicipal trails master plan as information and furthermore directs administration to bring the intermunicipal trails master plan back to a future meeting of council for adoption. Any discussion on this? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote.
Sorry, Mr. Reeve, we just have a glitch here. If you want to vote manually.
Okay, all those in favor? That's carried by everyone. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, councillor Reeve Fadav.
Yeah, just a, just a quick comment. So I'd like to see if we can get a meeting with Forestry and Parks to see what this looks like on their part, so we can actually do some, I guess, some, some advocating on, on that part and see what, what they mean as far as funding goes. And I'd like to see, get our administration to maybe get a meeting with Forestry and Parks.
With, with the city as well, or just ourselves?
I mean, the city could probably do it, but I mean, we can, whoever wants to do, but I think, you know, if we wait for everybody to do it, I think we just get administration or give direction to administration to set up a meeting with Forestry and Parks with the minister or ADM or the deputy minister, anything like that.
Okay.
We're good like that? We don't need a motion?
Yeah, I don't think we need.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going on to 9.3.1, or do you need a little bit of time, ladies? We're good? Okay. Hey, good morning.
Good morning. So today, we will be taking a brief look at the municipal development plan, or MDP, for first reading. So the MDP is the legally recognized framework for making decisions within a municipality. It compares competing needs in the community and balances demands of development, development with impacts in other areas. It also provides direction for other municipal plans and bylaws, such as the land use bylaw and any other plan below that. The MDP needs to be updated regularly in order to preserve and reflect the current community values. The MDP is a long-term planning document that sets directions for the future of the MD, and the MDP is referenced often and is an important tool in guiding development through rules and regulations. So in an attempt to ensure the relevancy of the MDP, administration and urban systems restarted the internal review in December of 2022, just after COVID there. Public engagement sessions were held during February 21st, 22nd, and 23rd of 2023, which had significant turnout. A public engagement survey was conducted from, from December 26, 2022 to February 28, 2023 as well. All the information that was gathered from the engagement sessions and the survey were taken into consideration and incorporated into the MDP. This update has been brought about due to ever-changing realities of the MD. This can include change in growth rates, population, new emerging trends in development, and as well to ensure the continued consistency with provincial legislation. So the new requirements under the Municipal Government Act. So should council approve the MDP for first reading? Under the RFD, it was noted that the public hearing was intended to be for August 22, 2023. However, administration has been taken under to consideration that a later date might be beneficial, pending some discussions with urban systems and their availability. So with that, if you guys have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'm just looking for a motion. Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I, going through here, I, I maybe was thinking that there should have been a little bit more on, on the military base. But when I first moved here, it was, you know, if you worked in the area, you worked on the base or you were farming, there wasn't so much gas and oil then, but there is now. So it was like gas and oil farming in military. And I, you know, it's kind of maybe not within the MD, but it sort of is. And I just kind of didn't, I don't know if anybody else noticed that, but there's really nothing in there about, you know, the military and the base and the growth and that sort of thing. And I think that's a big driver, or it is going to be a big driver. I don't know how we add that in or if we want to, but this is my, my, my comment, so.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion then? Yes?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadav, on making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number 1853, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number 87, to adopt the municipal development plan for the Municipal District of Bonneville number 87 be given first reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to make a comment on the presentation. It was really great, a lot of information, and some of the stuff is, is good to see as a, as a refresher, growth rates and all that kind of stuff. It's, it's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, 9.4.1.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
So this report is the Corporate Services' second quarterly report for 2023. You will see the attachment that outlines accomplishments from each of the departments within Corporate Services. And the managers are going to come up and speak to two or three of the higher priority items that are on this list. Of course, if you have any questions, as they're going through, please feel comfortable asking them anything you like. And the first department up is Assessment Services.
So we can ask Vic anything we'd like? All right.
Sir Reeve, to all council, good morning.
Morning.
I'm just going to hit the highlights. You have the printed version in front of you. So basically, with the Assessment Services, you've got two assessors that are appointed to provide the assessment service for you. There's Kelvin, who's not in today, he's on vacation, that's why I'm presenting. You've got the municipal assessor. The responsibilities are for the farmland, residential, commercial, and industrial, not including the oil field. And the other assessor would be the provincial assessor who has the, takes care of the designated industrial properties. To highlight the responsibilities of the municipal assessor, one of the highlights in our world is that we have a summer student, Ora Slimchuk. I'd like to introduce him to council. He's working with us. He's graduated from appraisal and assessment in Vermillion. We are showing him the procedures, inspections, and valuation techniques we use to provide the assessment service for the MD. One of the other highlights I'd like to bring to your attention is that we've started our reinspection cycle, which means there's best practices dictated by the province on how we should conduct the assessment service. In this case, it's, we're reinspecting all the properties in range five. That's basically starts off at Muriel Lake, runs straight north, with the boundaries being the Gurneville Road on the west side and Highway 41, and the Highway 657 all the way through Fort Kent and north. So all those property owners have received letters, over 900 of them, that we are coming, looking at the properties. The inspections vary on types. One could be just a drive-by, where nothing's really changed, we're not coming into the property, where others require physical inspections, sometimes just exterior, sometimes interior, too, depending on the property type. Moving on to the designated property assessment types, one of the highlights there is that the MD of Bonneville has successfully entered into a contract with the provincial assessor to provide the five years of service, and with a three-year extension. That means myself and another assessor, Brent, will be doing the inspections on all the oil field facilities. We've already done some of the inspections, meaning that we've done the Strathcona Tucker Lake and Orion Project. As far as property taxes, the property assessment and tax notices for 2023 have been mailed out on May 22nd, or May 26th. I'm sure you all received that. And people are coming in and paying their taxes, their normal process. And that would be the highlights. Any questions?
Yeah, I think we should bring Mr. Sipchak up and see where he's from and how it's going so far. Put him on the spot, see, see how he can do here.
Sure.
Just a little bit about yourself, where you're from and... Yeah?
Uh, I'm from Iron River, just north here, you all know probably. I just graduated from Lloyd Minister in Real Estate Appraisal and Assessment. It was a two-year program. And I've been here for two months now, and it's going pretty well. I share office with Vic, so I'm always with Vic in the morning and throughout the day. It's good, yeah.
Right on. Well, welcome here, and have a great day.
Thanks.
Just got a question.
Oh, you got, okay, we got questions, good.
I'm just curious, Sarah, in office with Vic, have you ever seen him wear a tie yet before?
No, this is the first time.
I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Kravyak.
I'm just wondering when you're going to ask for your own office?
Uh, not yet, I don't know. It's not my decision.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Have a great day. Any questions for Vic here? All right, good job, Vic. Thanks. Have a great day. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council. So customer service has been pretty busy. As Victor was saying, it's property tax season. In this quarter, we've collected 8.8 million in cash receiving payments. We assisted Louis in public safety, and the executive team We assisted Louis in public safety and the executive team with planning and executing the emergency preparedness event that was held in Ardmore. We also helped infrastructure services and marketing and communications with the Public Work Week event that was held at Public Works Building. And the opening of the campground season has also kept us busy, and we provided some training for the campground caretakers and getting visitor information kind of set up with them. So that's about all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Jackie?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, I'd just like to personally thank Jackie for the work she did this weekend. Jackie looked after the volunteers and the burgers that we were doing for the Stars donation at the Gear Grabbers all weekend. Jackie worked most of the weekend in the heat. I think we earned it still right around thirty-two hundred dollars. Tremendous job, giving of the personal time, these were all volunteers this weekend. There was other people involved, Jackie kind of took the lead. Jackie and Charlie from Infrastructure were kind of the two key people, and then there was, there were volunteers underneath that. So thank you, Jackie, for a heck of a job, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, yeah, thank you on behalf of myself and council for doing that this weekend, that's a big blessing that you were there. Any other questions for Jackie, you had a comment or any? Well, keep up the good work, have a great day.
Thanks, Ete.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council.
Good morning.
So finance has been very busy, of course, it's, MD as a whole has been very busy throughout the last three months. So I'm just gonna go through the highlighted areas, as you have all the details of our regular day-to-day in front of you. Number one, we assisted the asset management team with detailed reports for some information that they were working on a project for. Two, we helped with the IT department get the new software and up and running for the visitor information center, as well as the Kinesu The Ridge Restaurant, which is now open more on a frequent basis. We also helped with the Ardmore landfill startup, they're getting some new software because they're getting new cards and a FOPT for the gates there. And the most important was working on the budget packages to get that out to the different departments, as well as setting up some training sessions for scheduling for, not only training for the Acrostica software, but also the software that finance uses throughout the organization, just in case there's people that need to get updated or refreshed with the software that we need to use. And that's about it, so if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Well, I just got a comment, I guess. You made a, you guys made a party upstairs for a young lady, say her name again, I never get her right.
McLeit.
McLeit, there you go, that I attended, and all you ladies' words were very beneficial for this young girl to move on. She's moving to the county of St. Paul, I believe.
We wished her very well, and we hope that wherever her future takes her, that she'll do awesome.
Yeah, and I think your words that you said were very, you know, all the words are great, but thank you for taking the bull by the horn and getting that done for her. I think that meant the world to her, that little get-together up on the second floor meant the world.
And she's not very far away, so she can come visit or we can go visit her, so.
That's right, right. Thank you for that, and great presentation, and all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So far, we've had our benefit transition from Sunlight to Group Source, that went really well. As you can see, our hiring doesn't stop, we hired seventy employees in the last three months. We have completed our HR business plan. Really, the basis of our department is helping employees, and whether that's going through employment from beginning to end is what we do.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? That was too short, darling. She's up and gone. Good job, have a great day.
So I'm Mr. Parsons today because he is away today.
Okay.
So in the IT department, they did conduct an old equipment auction where they got rid of the equipment that was no longer of use to the ID, and they made two thousand and fifty dollars doing that. They awarded the contract for our records management project, and that was awarded to Gravity Union. And we have our kickoff meeting scheduled for this week, next week, sorry. And of course, the IT office renovations are completed, and the guys have moved into that space. So if you're looking for an IT person in the physical sense...
Yeah, they're that way.
It's that way, yeah.
Over there, I think.
The end council meeting. So that concludes the update for Corporate Services for the second quarter, and I would ask that council accepts the Corporate Services' two thousand and twenty-three second quarterly report as information.
Okay, thank you, thank you everyone for that presentation, I'm just looking for a motion, gentlemen. I'll make that motion. Okay, thank you, Councilor Slipchik, for making a motion on behalf of council, the council accepts the Corporate Services' twenty twenty-three second quarterly report as information. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, call for the, call for the vote, thanks. That's carried, thank you. Have a great day. On, I think we're gonna go down to...
Nine point six.
Nine point six point one, thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Now, some of this information is a little dated, this was gonna come to council earlier. However, it's regarding extended councilor absence approval. The Municipal Government Act under section one seventy-four indicates that if a member of council is absent from all regular council meetings held during any period of eight consecutive weeks, they are technically disqualified from council. This timeline of eight weeks starts on the date of the first meeting missed. There is an exception to this clause, which would be if council authorizes the absence beyond the eight-week period through council resolution before the end of the last regular meeting of council in the said eight-week period. When we put this RFD together, we were unsure of Councilor Kravjak's, what his summer was going to look like, and at the time, Councilor Kravjak wasn't currently going to be attending regular council meetings, and it was anticipated he would not be returning until the scheduled August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting of council. And had Councilor Kravjak not been today, he would have technically been outside of that eight-week period, and as a result, Legislative Service and myself thought it best to provide council with the opportunity to provide Councilor Kravjak with a resolution, allowing him to miss as much council as he needs for personal reasons. So some of the, like I said, some of the information is a little dated, obviously, and we're thrilled that Councilor Kravjak has joined us today, but we still would be recommending that council authorizes Councilor Kravjak's absence from regular council meetings of council until further notice. That does not mean he cannot attend council meetings, he certainly can, but if there is a situation that arises, he certainly would be eligible to remain on council and take whatever time he needed.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, please.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making a motion on behalf of council that council authorizes, council authorities, Councilor Kravjak's absence from regular meetings of council until further notice. Any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
I should have, thank you, Mr. Reeve, I should have phoned Mr. Hogan sooner, but I called him yesterday that I will be attending, so actually, I would not have needed this, but I'm not sure about the future, there's, not sure of my schedule in the future, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good to have this in order, in case, you know, we don't know the future, we hope you're back and with us, but right now, we just have to take provisions to do this, so it's good. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Okay, I guess we'll go back to nine point four point two, eighteen forty-seven.
Thank you. So this is bylaw number eighteen forty-seven, the amending master rates bylaw, and it has been prepared for council's consideration. It has a number of amendments included in it. Agricultural Services has removed property line brushing and reference to associated policy, it is, as it is no longer relevant. Planning and Development has an addition of a municipal land permit license fee and revision of the name of the roadway license application fee. Transportation has the addition of the property line brushing and reference to the associated policy. As well, water and sewer revision to the wording for the water and sewer system fees to improve clarity and reduce the need for amendments to our documents based on changes to the town of Bonneville's utility rates. It removes, it also removes the water service deposit and addition of a hydrovac fee under equipment. So the first reading was passed, and so today, I'm asking for bylaw number eighteen forty-seven being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to amend the master rates bylaw be given second reading.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion. Okay, thank you, Councilor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen forty-seven being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to amend the master rates bylaw be given second reading. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Reeve, if the votes are not showing up for yourself or Deputy Reeve Fedeau, you can indicate your vote manually.
Okay, all those in favor? What's that? That's carried, thank you. I'll make a motion for third reading. Okay, thank you, Councilor Slipchik, for making a motion that bylaw number eighteen forty-seven be given third reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Same thing as before? Just Deputy Reeve and myself? Okay, are you in favor, yep. Carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto nine point five point one. Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Good morning. I'm here in front of you today for the Infrastructure Services' two thousand and twenty-three first and second quarterly reports. Infrastructure Services has prepared quarterly reports for council for Q1 and Q2. Transportation update will be presented by Monte Dinenko, manager of transportation. Fleet Facilities and Utilities update will be presented by Lyle Treleven, manager of Fleet Facilities and Utilities. So I'll have them come up right now in your packages. Appendix A is your transportation report, and Appendix B is your Fleet Facilities and Utilities report.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council.
Morning.
You want me to run this myself here? So we didn't make it for the first Q1 report, so we're gonna do them both here. So for Q1, the roadside brushing and ditch improvements, we put out an RFT on February sixteenth detailing seven separate roadway locations for a total of twenty-one point two kilometers. Tender was awarded March thirteenth, and work began March, May fifteenth, and this work is ongoing. Drainage improvements, in the first quarter, there was three of the drainage issues that we worked on. Number three, MAP ID twenty-five, referred to as the Ducks Unlimited Ditch, to the Ducks Unlimited, complete from the Ducks Unlimited weir to Muriel Creek intersection. Number four, Shaw House Vincent Creek, this is by Bonneville Welding. And number six, the Gamash Legerey ditch cleaning was completed, flows restored, and centerline culvert removed on Range Road four forty-four undeveloped road allowance. The concerns received through our concern line, a total of nearly five hundred and seventy concern line calls were received in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three, with a large majority pertaining to snowplow flags, hardship driveways, and roadway concerns. As such, these concerns were handled fairly quickly after receiving them. This phone line is dedicated to twenty-four-hour resident concerns and is used for reporting urgent situations. All residents are encouraged to utilize the service should they wish to report an issue. So this is a service that's been going on since, I think, two thousand and eleven-ish, we document all of them, we can go back if it's a, if it's a concern or a ratepayer that's been on there before and see what the resolution was. So we encourage all the residents to go through this concern line. Q2, we celebrated National Public Works Week. The MD participated in this week from May twenty-first to twenty-seventh. Throughout the week, we posted facts and information about Public Works Department on our social media platforms. We capped off the week with an open house event at our yard on May twenty-seventh with some heavy equipment demonstrations, displays, information sessions, kids' events, free barbecue, and more. It was a well-attended event with great public interaction. Asphalt crack ceiling, the RFT went out detailing twenty-nine separate roadway locations, as well as the Bonneville Airport runway, taxiway, and apron for a total of two hundred and twenty-one point eight four kilometers. Tender was awarded May thirtieth, and the work actually started yesterday. So this is on all the asphalt top roads in the area. Dust control program began on June fifth, seventeen scheduled MG thirty locations, actually a little higher than that right now, and six scheduled cold mix locations. We completed the MG thirty yesterday, and majority of the cold mix locations are also complete. The rip and relay, this season's rip and relay list consists of eleven and a half miles scheduled for completion in nine separate locations. Work began on June fourteenth, and this is ongoing, we hope to be done end of August or early September. Shoulder pull program is well underway and began on June fifth. There's ten locations totaling sixteen miles for in-house completion this season, and we're up to, this was done a while ago, I believe we're done six locations currently. So we're over halfway done. And the concerns in Q2, as of this report date, was a hundred and fifty concern line calls, mainly relating to road concerns and airport inquiries. And that's all I have.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fedeau? Oops, sorry.
I was just gonna ask, how does a guy get his hands on this concern line document that you guys have there? And secondly, what were some of the airport concerns? I'm curious on that.
Some, through the Reeve, to Councilor Skarson, our admin in the office has that, the concerns list, and it's sent to the foreman and supervisors every day. I think if you put in a request, we could send it to you, I'd ask my general manager on that. There's also a monthly summary of it, so it's out there. Just put a request in for it, I'm sure we can get it to you. As far as the airport, various things, runway conditions, you know, flight schedule, stuff like that, so.
Okay. Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
So, Garcia, asphalt crack ceiling, have you guys explored, do you do it possibly in-house, since we have so many roads, I mean, we're doing two hundred and twenty-four...
We had a few foremen go to a trade show this spring, and there was a demonstration of how we do that. We would need to purchase a machine for it, though, and then procure our own crack sealing material. The sheer quantity this year, this hasn't been done for a few years, so currently we are doing all the roads. Next year, we will be completing the subdivisions is the plan, whether that's self-performed or third-party will be, we will look at it for sure.
Counselor Swagard, then Subchik, then Skarson.
Yeah, it's kind of a question about the concern line, I guess, because I, I think it works well. I tell all the residents, you know, if they, they'll call me off once in a while and ask me about dust control or whatever, and I'll, I'll just tell them to call the number. But then I'm not sure if, like, I'm not getting any feedback to find out if, you know, they're concerned, you know, if they got the dust control or they didn't. And so I think it was not that many months ago that we kind of asked for a list of what residents were getting dust control and which ones weren't. But I'm not sure how you want us to handle that. So if somebody calls me and asks for dust control, I tell them to call. But how do I, kind of, who do I follow up with or whatever to find out that it got actioned or it didn't, or are they on a waiting list or whatever? Because I tell them, you know, you may be on a waiting list, but I said it might get done next year. But how do I, what, what would, and the other comment about the concern line, everyone's using it, but a lot of people now kind of aren't using it in the after-hours because it's, it sounds like an emergency call line, and so it's not clear to them that it's just a concern line. So I'm not sure.
Through the reef, to Counselor Swagard, I'll answer your second question first. So during the day, the calls come directly to us.
Right.
After-hours and weekends, it is a dispatch out of Red Deer, which has certain parameters on, to determine whether or not it is a, it warrants a call directly to the, to the foreman that's on call. There's always a foreman on call. Example, a speed sign that's down probably won't get a, get a immediate patch through to the foreman, whereas if it's a road that's washing out, will. So they prioritize based on the severity of the, of the.
And I, and I get that, but if, if we're telling them it's, it's a concern line, maybe I shouldn't tell them that, maybe I should say, oh, call during the day, don't call after hours? Because after hours, the operator kind of tends to say, well, that's not an emergency, so can they call back later? Anyway, I mean, I've, I've got that response when I've called. So, I mean, that's fair, but then maybe we tell folks not to use it at night unless it's an emergency? I, I'm not sure what everyone, anyone else thinks, but.
Regardless of if it's emergency or not, does get captured on our list, so we do address it the very next day if it didn't get patched through to the foreman.
Okay, so they do, they do pass that information on to you, though?
Absolutely. Every concern is, is on, is on the list called.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it is, though, but, I mean, because I had the example where I live in Ardmore, water, water was down in Ardmore, so I thought, well, man, is there a problem with something that they should know about? So I did call after hours, and, and she told me to call back on Monday, and so I, I kind of didn't get it warm and fuzzy about that one, but, but I just not sure if it's quite working what, the way we, so I'm telling people now to call during off, office hours. You know, for dust controls and that sort of thing, it seems to work better.
Right. I would still encourage you, if it is an emergency, if you see something that's a hazard on one of our roads, that they do call that eight-one-two-five-thousand number, and we will, like I said, we have people on call at all times.
Okay, to add to that, so if he, anybody, if they call, do they document that call anyway, and they still give you the information, even if they told them to phone back next week?
First, I'm hearing of telling them to phone back, it would be documented with the, with the caller's information.
It don't matter what someone asks for, it'll be documented, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Subchik?
Yeah, so we got six scheduled cold mix locations, you said they were just about done, completed? The six cold mix locations?
Through the reef, for dust control?
Yeah.
I apologize, I, I believe three of them are completed.
Three are completed?
Yes.
So we got delivery of our product recently, then? The product was delivered recently, because I thought there was a delay in acquiring product for cold mix for.
No, we have the cold mix in our yard for the dust.
Oh, you're using that stuff?
For the cold mix dust controls, yes.
Okay. Are any of these Ben, dust control for applicants that were sent in, applications?
Yes.
From residents? How many of them are residents? Three or?
Six of the cold mix.
They're all gonna be, all six is gonna be applications fulfilled?
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty-three MG thirty location.
Yeah, just gonna add a, ask a question because of that. What's our coal mix like this year? Maybe this ain't the place to ask it, but how did it, how did it pan out?
With the, we haven't, like I said, we haven't done rip and relays with the dust, cold mix dust controls, it is turning out.
Pretty good mix?
Yes.
Because we had the problem with that before, that the mix wasn't that hot, so.
Yeah, last year's rip and relays are, are holding out very well for the most part.
Thank you, sir. I'll, I'll let Counselor Skarson go, and then you can add some, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if this is your department, it probably isn't, but I mean, thinking when Ben was talking about the crack sealing on the trails, like, is there anyone that's looking after any crack sealing on trails? Because I see spots that the cracks and there's weeds growing up in the middle of the trail and stuff, so is that something you guys are looking to, or?
Through the reef, to Counselor Skarson, I know there was some talk about it last year through Ag and Parks. As far as any action items on it, it's not on this year's program, no, for, for our department.
Yeah, so I don't know, I mean, maybe the CEO can add that to whoever's list. I'm not sure who would even look after that, but it's, I mean, if we want to talk about maintenance, I mean, those, once the weeds start growing through those, the pavement and, you know, starts to go pretty quick, right? So.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it was Counselor Swagard, then Counselor Subchik, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Skarson for bringing that up. I, I've brought up in the past also, and I think it's a parks thing, but I'd ask admin to, to look at that, because they, you know, we pay, put a lot of money into these trails and, and some of them are starting to degrade because you got grass growing through them. And I'm, I'm sure that's not your thing, I think that's parks. But I'll ask admin to speak up maybe and find out who does look after those. That beaster maybe, or?
I believe trail maintenance would fall to parks and recreation, and certainly if it were to be done next year, it would be a budgetary consideration at budget time. And I would also, just a clarification, we had a product delivery issue with the MG thirty product, not the cold mix. It was MG thirty that we were, that was delayed by several weeks this year. And as for dust control and people calling the concern line, there is an application process, phoning the concern line in July and asking for dust control has missed the application. Staff will be coming back probably at the next council meeting with, with what, I think we're just now in the middle of determining how much of the budgeted money is left, and then from there to determine where we go from there. So there will be a list of the areas that have been done, that'll be brought to council as well as what the plan is with, if there is any remaining funds, and I, today I couldn't speak to whether there's any remaining funds, but, but people who are calling about dust control concerns, unless it's an industry-related, the application period has come and it is gone.
If I may speak to the crack filling issue on the, on the trails, administratively, we'll work with the parks department to maybe encompass that with our tender for next year's crack sealing, or if in the event we do in-house crack sealing, we'll, we'll work with them to identify the locations and add them to that scope of work.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Counselor Swagard, then Counselor Subchik?
Yeah, Monte, the question of, like, I'm surprised there's only six scheduled dust controls, cold mix dust controls in front of properties. Those are residential properties, are they?
Through the reef, to Counselor Swagard, yes, that's correct.
So I, I guess I would ask, can we get a list of those locations?
Sure.
And then that, that way I can, you know, tell these folks, well, I think you're on a list, you're not, or whatever, but, yeah, seems, I, I guess I have a little concern, six seems low, like we used to do.
Well, I, I guess in the upcoming budget, if we want more dust controls, we'll have to do something about it, right? It's, it's up to council, right?
For sure.
But we only have so much money in the budget right now that I know of.
Yeah, I'm surprised that we budget, did we actually only budget for six dust controls?
If, if I may, we had a bus, a dust control budget at the cost of about twenty-five thousand dollars per cold mix dust control. We have to really look and see which ones are required. We have, we can turn some back into gravel and put MG thirty for a cheaper solution to dust abatement, but again, with the, with the budget that council approved for us, six cold mix dust controls is, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars already just for six. So, yeah, there are many more requests for cold mix dust controls, but the, the allotted budget just does not allow for that. Further to that, once they're put in, the maintenance on the dust controls, the cold mix dust controls are a lot more than, than MG thirty. So again, the, the cost, the maintenance cost of that goes up as well. So initial cost of twenty-five grand per, and then the, the annual maintenance associated with that makes cold mix dust controls in front of residents, you know, cost prohibitive based on the budget that were allotted.
Okay, Mr. Reeve, how many people actually requested dust control?
That requested dust control, like, cold mix or in total?
Cold mix, yeah, no, cold, cold mix dust control.
I'd have to look at our, our, our records, but I would say there's at least a couple dozen requests for, and that comes through council as well for, for cold mix dust controls. Do you have that number?
And, and Mr. Reeve, members of council, just given the, that we've done twenty-four MG thirty applications and we've done six dust controls, my rough math tells me that we're already well in excess of two hundred thousand dollars in terms of dust control. Council approved the budget of three hundred thousand dollars. We can do as many dust controls next year as council would like, just, we're just working inside a budget number that council gave us. So if council would like twelve, or thirteen, or fifteen, or thirty cold mix dust controls done, that's just a matter of putting those into the operating budget and then, and then figuring out what the tax rate's gonna look like to pay for that. We're perfectly happy to do it, but this year we're working on the three hundred thousand dollar budget. I'm assuming right now we're gonna probably be at the two-twenty to two-forty mark, that's just my rough math, which means there's only enough money left to do a couple more cold mix and a couple of more MG thirty applications. So it's really a function of how much money does council want to put to dust control. We're perfectly happy to, to complete all of the projects, but right now we're prioritizing, if we've got ten, or fifteen, or twenty applications, we're just trying to prioritize which are the ones that need it the most, which ones are on high-traffic roads and those type of things. Individuals who have applied who are on low, low-volume, low-density roads are likely not going to get cold mix this year and maybe not next year. However, if they're prepared to take MG thirty, a lot of those properties could be cold mixed fairly easily. You know, our cost in, in MG thirty, when we're all said and done, is probably between twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars as opposed to twenty-five thousand dollars for cold mix. So it's really a function of budget, what council is prepared to, is to place in, in an operating budget for next year's dust control.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Reeve.
Yeah, go ahead.
The reason I ask that question, though, is because I, we have to budget for it if, if we don't know how many people are requesting it, and you, you said that was brought to council, but I've, I've never seen a list of, of people that have requested dust control. So if you, I mean, if you're saying there is twenty-five or thirty, then maybe we better start looking at budgeting a bit more than six?
Well.
Well, again, Mr. Reeve, members of council, I, I'm not sure that, I, I would be thrilled about bringing a list of people's names so council can say John Doe gets, but Joe Blow doesn't. And then council has to determine based on the size of our budget and based on what the priorities are, what that number's going to be. If we're gonna do all of them, then we, we will certainly tell you what they're going to be, but the number that has been standard since I've been here and prior to my arrival here was about three hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, keep in mind, that three hundred thousand is just for product. I, I want to be clear on this, that that three hundred thousand's for product, our actual dust control cost probably isn't around the million-dollar mark when you factor in gravel, equipment time, operator time, water, et cetera, et cetera. The three hundred thousand that we're talking about is just product alone. So if you expand that to a six hundred thousand dollar number, you're now really into probably a one-point-eight or two-million-dollar annual operating budget just for dust control. So those numbers we're talking about is our cost on purchasing product and product alone. So we can certainly say that there's been twenty-two applications, but again, we order product in the spring, we have some dates in terms of the application process, we have residents who are absolutely opposed to having MG thirty placed in front of their properties and want cold mix. If, if their property has a very low traffic count, it is hard to justify a twenty-five thousand dollar cost for a road that has a traffic count of four per day. It is, so those are the things, so we can certainly put together and say there's twenty-three people on the list for cold mix, and that will have a cost of X number of dollars, and if council's prepared to put money towards it, then, then so be it. But to date, the number's been three hundred thousand, and.
I guess, I guess also we could check into a, a less-cost way of putting them in, instead, like mixing our own on the road. I don't think years ago it used to cost a twenty-five thousand, but things have changed with everything, but I think when we used to do a lot of them, we used to do a lot of in-house and did them ourselves, and, and we used to roll the oil right on, and they did them, and they lasted for a lot of years, these things, but depends on the traffic and depends, lots of depends, but, thank you. You got one more from Counselor Subchik?
Yeah, I'd just like to recall what Counselor Swagard said about, I'd like to know what the numbers of applicants we get every year for dust control versus cold mix and MG thirty, like what they're asking for. I'd like to see that number.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, thank you, Monte. Appreciate it.
The other thing, while Monte was still there, I would just like to thank Monte and the crew that helped put together the road tour for council a few weeks back. I think as we drove around, we realized what good shape our roads are in, as we toured most, most through the county, and I'd like to thank Monte and his crews for, for A, putting the tour together, and B, for, for the great job on the roads. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And from council, too. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, one more.
One more comment?
One more thanks and one more comment about the, the gear grabbers and moving all the, the equipment there and everything else. They went really smooth, and I think by about eight o'clock last night, they had everything done and it was over with, so, yeah, thanks for the bleachers, hauling the bleachers and everything else, that was greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Reeve, thank you, all council. Hey, good morning.
Morning. It's nice to see you out in the tour last, or two weeks ago, I guess it was, eh?
Yes.
So it kind of makes you realize how big the MD actually is.
Yeah, she was a calm, hot day.
Yeah.
We got pictures to prove it.
Okay, we'll just go through some of our capital works that we've gone through so far in twenty twenty-three. Bridge file eight-five-zero-seven-four, which is on the Frog Leg Tributary on Range Road four thirty-three, that has now been completed. The contractor was actually out just towards the end of last week completing some seeding and just a little bit of grading, just to wrap up their work. They actually finished the construction in March, I believe, but of course, that's a bit early for doing any seeding. Township Road six-ten, between Highway twenty-eight and Range Road four sixty, that is well underway. The original completion date was expected to be the twenty-sixth of August. We have been informed by the prime contractor that that is now going to extend into September. Apparently, they're delayed on another project down in, I believe they're way down south somewhere around Frinchard Creek. At any rate, it will be completed, we expect sometime mid-September-ish, give or take a little bit. And recently, CNRL approached us about changing the cold mix surface on Township Road six-two two, getting it graded, based, and paved. They have agreed, they've hired a consultant, WSP, who's our consultant as well, and they are paying, CNRL is paying WSP to do the engineering and design of that roadway. CNRL has, has agreed to pay for this. I'm not entirely certain of the exact details of do we pay first and they pay us back, but that construction is likely not going to happen until twenty twenty-four. In fact, I received notice yesterday that the geotactical investigation, which was supposed to start yesterday, has been delayed until the twenty-eighth of July due to first calls not exactly responding very quickly, so they're, they've been delayed a little bit. There's just a few pictures of some of that's been going on, had going on this so far this year. And if anybody's ever been through on Township Road six-twenty-two, if you want to find rocks, there's lots and lots and lots of rocks, big ones. Couple that are about the size of a Volkswagen.
I couldn't believe it, I drove there, the, a guy told me there was rocks, and I went there the other day, and I go, oh, what, what's he talking about? And I was like, there are some serious rocks.
They have already taken out about twenty loads of rock that they've hauled away, and there's still lots and lots and lots.
I thought, it was almost in process, I thought it was impossible, almost, like, it's like they haul them in there.
Those are the things, we're pulling those out from the subgrade of the road, you know, like, and they're size, half the size of a Volkswagen.
Yeah.
I don't even know how they move them.
That's crazy.
Okay, some of the other stuff that we're, we're following up on here, we are engaged with a consultant right now.
I thought, it was almost impossible, I thought it was impossible, almost like it's like they haul them in there.
Those are the things, we're pulling those out from the subgrade of the road. You know, like, and their size, half the size of a Volkswagen, I don't even know how they move them.
That's crazy.
Okay, some of the other stuff that we're, we're following up on here. Uh, we are engaged with a consultant right now, uh, preparing an emergency backup generator for the main office and for Kinnisoo Ridge. I believe the sizing of the generators is due, I believe, on Monday. Uh, once we get that, we'll look into procuring a generator and getting it installed so that we, next time we have a power outage that we don't have to shut down. Uh, the old Lakeland Connect Building, which is now the IT department, that has been completed. Uh, we just have a, uh, just the sidewalk between the parking lot and the building door just needs to be installed. Uh, we're looking to get that done sometime in the next, in a few weeks here. Uh, the fuel and oil supply tender, uh, was awarded to Lakeland Co-op, that is for a three-year term. Uh, we got actually a fairly good rate from them, uh, when we ran that tender. We are still monitoring the Cold Lake to Bonneville, uh, the twenty-four-inch water main. Between January and the end of April, uh, this year, we were already missing thirty thousand cubic meters of water. That's a lot. It would more, that would fill up this room many times over. Uh, we still don't know where it's going and it's a, it's an ongoing thing. We're, uh, the last, uh, result that I saw, we were somewhere on, we're approaching sixty thousand cubic meters of water that we don't know where it went. Uh, the Kinnisoo Ridge Water Well, we actually had that cleaned in mid-April. Uh, they were having some issues with, uh, the color and the odor of the water, so we installed a reverse osmosis system. Uh, it, it's eliminated the color and the odor issues. Um, that's mainly for the potable water. Even on occasion, you will still get some discoloration and a little bit of odor from some of the stuff that's not, non-potable water. Uh, we installed a new pump for the Theryan Sanitary System, uh, that has been received and has been installed already. We are also currently in the process of reviewing all MD Bridge Files, uh, to determine whether some of them can be closed rather than being repaired or reconstructed. Uh, I believe, uh, council saw the presentation from Todd regarding then the need for approximately ninety million dollars over the course of the next, uh, ten years. We have gone through extensively, looking at all of those bridges. There is now, uh, a list of bridges that would have a minimal impact or bridge culverts that would have a minimal impact if we closed them. Uh, I believe Todd is, uh, doing a presentation for you that later this summer so that there's some decisions to be made. Regarding some of our other facilities, uh, the Bonneville Regional Airport, the detailed terminal design is now, uh, in the hands of a different consultant. Uh, we've, uh, we released the tender and awarded the tender for the new eight-foot perimeter fenced. Uh, they actually should be getting started here, I believe, towards the end of July. We've also purchased, uh, some new airfield equipment. Uh, the big sweeper and the de-asher sprayer have been delivered and our big industrial-sized snow blower, uh, we're expecting the delivery of that in the fall. We've also done a real property report and a survey of the airport, uh, grounds and all of the individual lots with an eye to subdividing those lots sometime in the, in the near future. For our fleet, uh, we purchased four new heavy trucks. Uh, we expect those to be delivered, it says July, but these days you never know for sure. Uh, we've also ordered, uh, four new wing plows for our graders. Uh, those are expected to be delivered in the fall. All of our equipment purchases were, uh, within the budgeted amounts. Uh, one of our reclaimers, uh, requires some very extensive repairs and we are going to delay that because we have three of them, so we're just gonna go with two for the time being. That third one, uh, that'll be a subject of a twenty-twenty-four budget request because it's a very expensive fix. Uh, now our department participated in three asset management workshops as part of a cohort or a team of other northern Alberta municipalities. Uh, we are continuing to gather data for, uh, the asset information database, uh, at sometime in the future here. I hope to have a presentation in conjunction with, uh, the asset management people to give you an idea of where we're going. And that about wraps up all the information I have for you, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, uh, councillor Swiger.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve, so, yeah, I did have a question about, uh, the Cold Lake to Bonneville water line. So is that a, it's gonna end up being dug up apparently to fix, you'd think to fix a leak somewhere, but, uh, is that under warranty?
I believe it is, yes.
So, but, so who's actually, is that the Bonneville Commission now kind of looking after that line or are we involved?
Bonneville Water Services Commission is actually, uh, they're still, we have not taken control of that line. It's not ours yet. Uh, we're, we assist them with maintenance and things like that and then do a little troubleshooting, but it, it does not belong to us as yet.
Okay, so fill me in though, so was that the intention though, that the MD actually takes over that line?
That's my understanding, or is that in conjunction with the Water Services Commission?
So, uh, through the reef, uh, to councillor Swiger, the, uh, Bonneville Regional Water Services Commission is, uh, uh, they're going to have control of the line. The MD of Bonneville is contracted out through the Bonneville Water Commission to do the maintenance and the inspection, uh, the, the routine, uh, maintenance and, and again, inspection of the line. And, and they are, uh, they are compensating the, the MD for that. This way they don't have to, the commission doesn't have to, uh, hire anybody else. We have, uh, individuals capable of doing that. Uh, so we are the ones that are looking after that. So it's, it, it's not the MD's line, but the MD is contracted out for the, uh, for the servicing of it. Does that answer your question?
I think it does, and then, so ultimately, we're, we, we don't have to pay for major repairs?
Uh, through the reef, that, that is correct. It's, uh, it, in, in around, the, the bill would go to the commission. The commission would then charge out the, uh, the appropriate amounts to the, to the, the customers that they have.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the clarity, appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, so, uh, after that, so, uh, administration is recommending that council accepts the Infrastructure Services twenty-twenty-three first and second quarterly reports as information. Uh, and I'll have you note that, uh, I did make, uh, I did make some notes on the comments that you were asking about some additional information, uh, that will be provided shortly.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion. Thank you Deputy Reeve Faddeev for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the Infrastructure Services two thousand twenty-three first and second quarterly reports as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing on, I'll call for the vote. Yes, okay. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you, council.
We need to go to nine point six point two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, uh, this is the CEO's office, uh, quarterly update, so I'd call on, uh, I guess on, uh, Ms. Wasselo to, uh, to start with communications report.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
You have before you our second quarter report for the Marketing and Communications Department. This quarter, we welcomed a new digital media technician, so we have a full complement of staff in our department now. Um, as you've heard from other departments, we worked with Public Safety and Infrastructure Services to present two open houses for the Emergency Preparedness Week and for a National Public Works Week. And that was a lot of fun, we got to learn a lot about both departments and everything that happens there. As always, we've been producing the Rural Review Resident Newsletters, those have been going out in the mail. Um, we have switched our mailing process so that it gets done in Edmonton now, so it doesn't go to Edmonton, come back to Bonneville, go back to Edmonton and then come back to Bonneville. Um, we've kind of cut down on that. We have also undertaken the rebranding project that was approved for this year. Um, there was an online survey which has seen over sixty responses, it is closed now, and we will be hosting open houses to receive resident repair feedback, July seventeenth and eighteenth, at the Eastbourne and Riverhurst Halls respectively. Um, we are also working with Ag Services on the ABCs of Bees regarding backyard beekeeping, which will be presented on Thursday in Ardmore. I was hoping that I would be able to give you a proper picture of the metrics for our website this quarter, um, which I haven't been able to do due to some changes with analytics. And again, we have had another change with analytics, with Google moving to Google Analytics four. Um, we have lost our analytics from mid-June all the way back to January. So the analytics were presented in my report are for a two-week period from, uh, mid-June to the end of June, which shows you that we've had over fifty-five hundred users and almost fourteen thousand page views. For a two-week period, that's pretty good, I think. Um, our top pages, as always during this time of the year, belong to the, um, MD campgrounds. We do advertising every week about available sites and direct people to either reserve online or to come back to our own website to see more information. Um, our Facebook reach is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand for the three-month period that we're discussing. And the top performing post for the Facebook page, um, the first one was the call-out for artisans for the Shaw House, where they have a marketplace where we sell local, locally-made goods, and it was well-received. Um, the second one was for the boat launch at Vezo Beach opening, the new boat launch with twenty thousand views. Um, opening weekend for campgrounds, as always, some of our most popular content with seventeen thousand views. Um, we had an additional fifteen thousand views on a boosted post, which is a post that we put money behind for those campground openings. And the Vezo Beach jumping pillow update with eleven thousand views, the update was to say that it wasn't opening just yet. So it was kind of interesting to see where that fell. we are getting ready to launch the redesigned website by the end of the month, this month, and are working towards a bunch of publications that we're hoping to have done by the end of the year and we'll be starting work on the adventure guide coming up shortly.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Deputy Reeve Faddeev?
Uh, good morning, so in regards to the, to the rebranding, with only sixty responses, that's only point five percent of our residents have responded. That, those, those numbers are like, uh, seriously low. Is there a way we can either extend or re-engage the population out there? Because at point five, there's, I mean, that is such a small number, that is just, it's, it's, it's super low.
Through the reef, to Deputy Reeve Faddeev, we can certainly discuss with our consultants, opening that survey back up. We're hoping, um, that we will get more feedback during those open houses next week, which would add, it will mimic the survey and the information that we're looking for there. So we're hoping that that will help add to that.
And, and Mr. Reeve, members of council, I'd certainly hope that all of council has done the survey as well as the workbooks that the consultant asked for completion, so, uh, that would help a lot as well.
Morning.
Good morning, Reeve and council. In Q two, the Safety Department is still focusing on our electronic reporting. Uh, proactive reporting in this quarter was, uh, six near misses, five HIDs and two positive, three positive observations. In all of twenty-twenty-two, I'll remind you that we had a total of nineteen near misses and five HIDs. So already the proactive reporting's been up. For incidents, in that quarter, we had eight recordable injuries and ten property damage. Um, this is slightly up from the first quarter, um, partially attributed to the increase in activity throughout the MD. I will say that five of the eight injuries were hand injuries, so the, um, Safety Department, um, took the opportunity in July here to address hand safety in our safety meeting and do a bit of a campaign on, um, hand safety awareness to try and, um, bring those recordables down a bit. Um, electronic reporting, these are, um, I'm just comparing them with Q one. So with vehicle inspections, over fifteen hundred were in Q one and then in Q two, nineteen hundred plus, um, which again is an increase from the activity. So that's a number that, um, you know, is obviously based on what's happening throughout the MD. For hazard assessments, in Q two, we are seeing electronic hazard assessments only sitting around five hundred. And then, um, up in Q two, we're upwards of eighteen hundred, so definitely that's increasing. Hazard assessment for the safety team is a key, uh, component of the Health and Safety Department and, and safety and people recognizing the hazards. And then the last reporting here, the site inspections, uh, these are typically supervisors, managers going out and visiting their sites, um, these are the recorded, the ones that we record. So thirty-one in Q, Q one and, um, forty-three in Q two. Uh, also in Q two, we hosted what we called the Safety Rodeo, it was the all-staff safety meeting, and instead of our standard, I guess barbecue speaker presentation, we, uh, took the opportunity here to wrangle all of the staff into teams. Um, they went through eight stations, which, uh, involve safety. Here's a couple of pictures, we, uh, drove MD vehicles. Uh, one of the favorites I know was learning about legislation, um, that's in the Parks Boardroom. Uh, we did vehicle inspections, uh, so people had to use the app and, and learn how to use the app and identify deficiencies in our MD vehicles. Uh, we worked on Wimms puzzles, uh, we did a hazard assessment with, um, the HO. Uh, we had staged hazards and we had people identify the hazards. We did team-building exercises, put out fires and worked on our PPE. So I personally had about sixty people who came up to me and said, um, you know, thank you very much for it, but it was really a great way to showcase safety and engage the, the team in the event. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, councillor Skarson.
I'm just curious, um, the recordable injuries and the property damage, is that year-to-date or is that just Q two?
That's just Q two.
And what was Q one again?
Q one, uh, we had six injuries. So right now, we, I'm really proud of the reporting, so I, I know these numbers are high, but we're getting everything reported and, um, it's not something that I'm, I, I would want to change. Is the reporting definitely, we need to control the injuries, but the Safety Department can't do that on their own. Um, so we need to, you know, work at training, we need to work at awareness, we need to look at supervision and competencies. Um, but, you know, right now, we're focusing on reporting and we're getting these in and it's a, it's a culture shift here and I'm actually really happy with what I'm seeing.
All right. Nice, see no more questions, thank you so much. And thank you for that Safety Rodeo, it was a great time.
Hello?
Hi.
So Legislative Services has their update, we have both Q one and Q two in our report. Um, so, uh, jumping right in, uh, council meeting since January first, our department has compiled agenda packages and provided secretariat support for nine regular meetings of council, three committee of the whole meetings and one special meeting of council, um, for, for bylaws. There are currently nine bylaws in draft for future consideration by council, some of which, uh, were presented today, um, for first or second and third reading. And then some of these, of these draft bylaws, one is new and eight are repealing and/or amending bylaws. Since January first, thirty-one bylaws have been passed by council, not including the bylaw, any bylaws that were passed today, eleven of which repealed previously active bylaws and/or amended current bylaws, with twenty being new or renewing bylaws. Uh, renewing bylaws in this, um, context were primarily road license agreement bylaws, where they were replacing a previously active bylaw that expired. And then additionally, one bylaw, being the procedural bylaw, was consolidated earlier this year with council's approval. Uh, for policies, as of June thirtieth, there are three new policies in draft for council consideration at a future meeting, with six new policies having been adopted and two rescinded so far. Of all municipal policies overall, nineteen percent have been amended and adopted by council since January first, with another twenty-one percent currently under review and seven percent are still due and pending review by administration. And then it, just another couple other side notes. Earlier this year, our department also managed the appointment of a new member-at-large to the Bonneville C two board after the current member stepped down. We worked with Marketing and Communications to create and post an advertisement, accepted the applications and brought a report forward to council for that appointment. And then we are also currently accepting applications for the new member-at-large position on the Original Sports Tourism Committee. Again, we worked with Marketing and Communications to put together an ad and get that posted.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Yes, councillor, uh, Swiger?
Yeah, thanks for that, just, uh, when you're, when you're showing percentages of, uh, policies, it'd be nice just to have the numbers, because I, I don't know how many policies we have. So you say twenty-one percent under review, seven percent still do. So you say twenty-one percent under review, seven percent still do.
We have over eighty. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but we have over eighty.
Might be nicer just to show us the numbers rather than the percentage, because, right? A percentage doesn't mean anything unless you know what the number is, so just nice to know there's eighty or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion or comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. Have a great day. I guess they're just looking for a motion now, gentlemen?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Slipjik, for making a motion. On behalf of council, the council accepts the CAO Office 2023 Second Quarterly Report as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All right, that's Carrie. Thank you. On to nine point seven point one.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and members of council. This is regarding the council invitation, and the one that we have today is invitation to the Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts Golf and Gala Event, September 1st and 2nd, 2023. Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts has invited the Reeve and council to attend their golf and gala fundraiser event, and have requested that the Reeve say grace for dinner at the gala. At the time of preparing this report, administration was still trying to confirm if any individual tickets or tables without sponsorship were available for purchase for the gala portion of the event on September 1st, 2023, and what those costs would be. I'm not sure if we've received any information, and they're telling me no. Alternatively, table sponsorship for the gala event is available in multiple increments as outlined in the attached information, and provides eight event tickets, including meals and additional items as sponsorships increases. The cost for a team of four for the golf portion of the event on September 2nd, 2023, is $1,000 and includes breakfast, golf cart, steak dinner at the Bonneville Golf and Country Club. So attached for your review is the Pen X A, which is the event and fee schedule. Costs and source of funding, the gala sponsorship ranges from fifteen hundred up to ten thousand, could be funded from council grants to individuals and non-government organizations pending budget availability. Golf sponsorships raised from one thousand to six thousand could be funded from council grants to individuals and non-government organizations pending budget availability. Costs for individual tickets or tables without sponsorship are still pending confirmation, but if they are available options, they could be funded from council grants to individuals and non-government organizations, again, pending budget availability. Registration for golf team of four players is a thousand per team, and that could be funded from the 2023 Public Relations Budget. Our recommended action is this is at council discretion, and you can see there is a list of council options for council.
Mr. Reeve, I can also just say that Ms. Kimbough did just confirm she did hear back, and there are no individual ticket purchase options at this time for the gala event. If you wish to attend, the minimum is the fifteen hundred dollar table sponsorship.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion or comments?
Yeah, just a quick question. I thought we did sponsor them for quite a bit money to be, for their building, so now, now we're on top of that. Just clarification now.
Sure, through the Reeve. We did have a chance to meet with representatives from the foundation regarding recognition or what was included with the hundred and seventy-eight thousand donation, which council approved. They are still responding, preparing what exactly that recognition will be, but it would be something tied to the facility itself. I specifically asked them if this event would be a part of that, or if there would be anything a part of that, and it was confirmed for me that this is totally separate.
Okay, interesting. So it's fundraising, but it's not fundraising? Okay, anyway, so that's, whatever. So I just let you know I, I won't be there, because Feast on the Beach is happening at the same time, and Feast on the Beach is, we've been supporting them for, for quite a few years. I'll, I'll be, I'll be there, so I will not be attending this one. So just let you, let you know.
Okay. Thank you. We need a motion, or we, I don't, I don't see my, my, mine aren't coming up.
I think if it, if it was just for the Reeve, I think number six, the council accepts the invitation to participate, and your time is your time if you choose to accept to, to participate and, and to be involved as the invitation and saying grace. I think most of the other ones are, are specific to the actual sponsorship and the allocation of funds.
Okay.
Does the Reeve have to buy tickets, say grace?
Sorry? Okay, well, I guess at September 1?
The gala, September 1st, the, the golf is September 2nd.
Right, right. Okay. Well, I'll attend, I guess, and I'll buy my own ticket. It's no problem there. Yeah? So we don't need a motion if I'm buying my own ticket. Does anybody else want to attend, or?
So just to confirm, you can absolutely have that conversation, but they did tell us that individual ticket purchases are not available.
Oh, so you need to buy a whole table? Is that correct? Okay. How much is a whole table?
Minimum is fifteen hundred dollar sponsorship for a table.
Okay.
Mr. Reeve, we'll, we'll confirm later today or tomorrow as to whether or not you're attending to be part of the opening ceremonies of the dinner would require a donation. We'll confirm that today.
Okay.
Says a thousand bucks on this thing here.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Swager.
I was just, I was gonna say, I can't, I'm not around for the golf or whatever, but it'd be nice to show that the MDs are supporting. I know Deputy Reeve knows we've already given them money, but, I mean, I, I think it's a gr, great initiative, you know, they're going out there to the public, organizing golf tournaments and whatever for fundraising. So sure, doesn't hurt us to show a little bit of support in, in that, you know, in that event too, even if it's, I don't know, if you put a team of four people into a golf tournament, or?
We, we did show a lot of support for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
No, and all I'm saying is, yeah, okay, we've done that. They've gone out and asked for support, and we've given it to them, but they're still carrying on fundraising. They, they need, they have to do this. So I'd hate to say, well, we're just kind of say, you know, we're not interested in, in supporting you anymore.
And just to clarify, the, the sponsorship for a thousand dollars, that's specific to the golf day? They have separate sponsorship packages for the gala and as, and the golf, so you're, you're either sponsoring one or the other. If you want to sponsor both, you're buying two separate sponsorship packages. So that's where the thousand dollar one is for, that's for the golf event, not the gala.
Okay. If someone wants to make a motion, or, or, can we leave this till next meeting, Al, or we need, they know, need to know this information?
They do seem, they, they do seem like they would like to know sooner rather than later, at the very least, whether or not they can expect the Reeve and attendants to say grace at the gala. Other than that, I, I really can't say. The event is not until September. We do have another meeting before then, but it is fairly close to the event, so it's, it's at your discretion.
Well, Mr. Reeve, I'd make, maybe I'll make two motions, or I'll make a motion to sponsor, doesn't sound like a lot of interest here from council, but I'll make a motion for a whole sponsor then, for, of a thousand bucks.
For the golf tournament?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll wait for the ladies to write that up.
And just for clarity, Counselor Swager, would you want the source of funding to be the council grants to individuals and non-government organizations budget?
If that's what you recommend, then that sounds fine.
Through the Reeve, just for confirmation of available budget, we are currently sitting for council giving at a balance of two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars for the remainder of the year. However, we did just get notified by Lakeland Community Futures. Did we go into council correspondence on Monday? We did just get notified that our beautification loan program, which we were doing in partnership with them, they have not received any applications for this year, so they are canceling the program. Therefore, we did just get reimbursed, I believe it was just around fifteen thousand dollars. So we do have that going back into this budget for this year. So we have approximately seventeen thousand dollars available for council giving to NGOs. As far as the donations policy goes, we are, should the female hockey camp receive association status as per member, as per council's motion earlier, we are at capacity for our donations policy for 2023. And we also have the community action grant program, which still has funding available. However, because the Clayton Bellamy Foundation did receive the large stream donation, there is a limitation that they can only apply to one stream per year. So they would not be eligible through that program. So long story short, council giving to NGOs is your current available budget, which is remaining in 2023.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary.
Yes.
I gotta go.
Okay. Would you like to do your council report first before you leave?
No.
Okay.
Josh can do it for me.
Willie?
Thanks, Josh. Here we go. All right. Thank you, Counselor Swager, for making a motion. On behalf of council, the council approves sponsoring the Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts 2023 Golf Event to be held on September 2nd, 2023, as a whole sponsor in the amount of one thousand to be funded from council giving to non-government organizations. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie. Thank you.
Have a great day, Darcy. We're just about finished here anyway, so on to correspondence and information, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Members of council. The, the email and correspondence, you received the executive reports from Unicor, the email from Smoky Lake County to MLA Shannon Stubbs regarding METI self-government, email from Canoe Procurement Group saying thank you, card from the Bonneville Outreach School saying thank you, and the council action report.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Any questions or comments, or does someone like to make a motion? Yes?
I'll make that motion, accept those correspondence.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadiev, for making a motion. On behalf of council, the council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through five. Any discussion on this motion? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please. That's Carrie. Thank you. On to reports from members of council. Mr. Crick.
We went on the MD Projects Tour, and again, thank you to the staff for putting that on. It was good to get out and see other areas of the MD. It was a good day. Went to the MD Show and Shine, had a good time with the staff. And also in the Kennedy, went to the Pancake Breakfast and the Pre-Edin Collake in Bonneville. And a huge thank you to the staff. They're not here, but hopefully can get passed on to them, the ones that made the float and spent their entire holiday basically working. So thanks to them for that. And then also attended the open house, the grand opening for the Visitor Information and Interpretive Center. And again, that looks really great, so good job. That's it for me.
Thank you. On to Mr. Swager.
Yeah, same events. Good to see that we actually were able to put a coordinate float for Bonneville and Collake. It turned out very nice, so thanks to staff for doing that one. Lots of events last, last weekend, it was good to see. It's, we need more events like that in the MD, and it turned out well. You had the races at the airport, and then you had the, the Rib Fest in Collake turned out really well, Kids Zones and Beer Gardens and all kinds of different things, market for folks. And then there, apparently there was, and I didn't see this one, but, well, sorry, right next to that, there was a kid soccer tournament that weekend, so tons of people showed up for that at the, by the Energy Center in Collake. And then there was some racing on the lake, apparently with different vehicles, I'm not sure what, what the thing was, if they're C-dos or what they were, but, you know, that was apparently a good event. So it's nice to see all these different events happening in the MD. And then the other one, just mentioned the Collake Regional Utility Service Commission meeting last night, and they discussed again the, their new sewage treatment plant, and they had to request, or have to pass a bylaw for lend, more lending, or more borrowing, sorry, because they had to increase the budget for that project. It's kind of doubled in value since they started, so it's interesting to see how that goes. That's it.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Fadiev?
Yeah, as far as committees, just FCSS, they're, they had some struggles with their, their accessible, you know, guest transportation program, so they have to finally all figure it out as far as, you know, who the users are, and that's, that's great. We, I don't know if we can help them out, but they're looking for drivers to also service Ward Five and Six for their meals and wheels. So I don't know if we can help them out with maybe spreading the word out there for our people who can get a hold of them, just to do a little bit of a email blast, or, sorry, not email blast, but a Facebook blast to maybe get some volunteers to help out with that. And that's about it. Everything else was the same, and we went three days over at the Gear Grabber Show, and that was fantastic. A lot of thanks to the MD for letting them use the airport. We actually forgot at home, but our stunt guys, the, the snowmobile racing guy that does flips, he signed a poster to, to the MD thanking them for, for their support using that. And yeah, it was, we seen about twenty-five hundred people. Actually, we raised thirty-two hundred dollars for Starz Air Ambulance, and it was, yeah, it was fantastic. A lot of, you know, we had racers anywhere from, from Medicine Hat to, to Meadow Lake to Peace River, and they were all using our area, and they're just, they loved it, so it was, it was really good. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Counselor Slipjik?
I basically had the same thing as Counselor Crick had. He must have took my notes. But anyway, and everything was about the car, the car races over the weekend. It was a fantastic turnout and got a good, a lot of people, positive responses about it, but I'd be curious to know how much economically we brought into the town, that event brings in for the town. Was there any way we'd be able to track that information?
Well, I can very well tell you, give you an idea of all, of, like, out of all the racers, there's probably a hundred and twenty between the two days that, that were there, and probably about half of them were staying in, like, hotels and, and enjoying the restaurants, but half of them were camping out over at, at the MD, but they're still, sorry, at, at the airport, but they were still getting, you know, food and water and everything else there, but, but half, half of them and their spouses. I know the group that I known for years out of Edmonton, they don't have campers, they bring them out, there's probably sixty of them that use, you know, hotels and everything else, so, yeah, it's kind of a rough idea.
I was just curious, because I think this would be valuable information when we start to come forward, start talking about RICF, RICF agreements and stuff. All this adds up.
And, and Mr. Reeve, members of council, I, I think the data would be good data to have. I'm not sure how we collect that data. There is no, there's, there's no, I, I don't believe anybody in the region, the town particularly, is collecting or collating that data either through the Chamber of Commerce or through the town economic development. So I'm not sure how we get it. We can certainly look into it. I can tell you that these events are probably a greater benefit to the town of Bonneville, and we probably, it probably has more expense to us, given that we use our airport to wear and care at the airport, our staff time, et cetera, et cetera. We'll certainly look into how we collect that data, but that, that would be, require all of the hotels and restaurants to report to somebody what the, their, their increase in business that day, or the, over those three days. And then, and right now, I'm not sure of anybody who's collecting that data, or anybody who's even asking for that data.
And it's, and it's pretty tough right now, because, I mean, the, especially last weekend, there was, it was provincial soccer tournament in Collake, so it was, you know, all the province and all their top teams. all the province and all their top teams were in Coal Lake for the provincials for, for soccer, so, yeah, I mean, everything was full, right from here all the way down to Coal Lake, every hotel was full.
It's all these events were working together.
Yeah, yeah.
Against each other.
I heard it was so full that actually they were, they were staying in St. Paul, as far as St. Paul, people had to stay.
Yeah. I guess, yeah, you guys pretty well covered everything. I just heard a lot of thanks to staff from all of council, from the C E O, from myself, I guess, I just want to make sure you guys get it out there to all the staff, that, that council and I are so appreciative of all what they've done over the last few weeks, whatever little part they had or big part they had, we are so, I'm proud to say that that's our staff, and they, they come out all the time, and they, many of them gave up their weekends to work for other people's benefit, so that's what we're about here at the M D, so I'm very proud, and my council, I'm very proud of them, they, you know, most of us attended both parades, and, you know, some of you guys went, took up your whole weekends lately to, for the benefit of our residents and other people's residents as well, other councils' residents in this M D, so I'm very proud of each and every one of us for what we've done, so thank you from myself and council. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, so I just want to mention that Munichor, Northeast Munichor is having their annual golf tournament in St. Paul on the fourteenth of August, and they always do invite all council to attend that, so will be, I don't know, a few of us hopefully can get down to St. Paul on the fourteenth of August for that golf tournament. Nine, nine holes, just kind of easygoing, whatever, and we normally will take something to donate for that, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I guess we're going to, we have a closed session now, so I'm gonna need a motion to go into closed sessions, please, gentlemen. Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadav, for making that motion to go. All those in favor, let's just do it the old-fashioned way. All five of us said good.
Yeah, and nothing, uh, major day, this is totally updates.
Are we off? All right, looking for a motion to come out of camera, that was Josh Crick, correct? All those in favor? Carrie?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor Sutrick, for making a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Carrie? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and see you in October.